We are live.
And we're waiting on John, I think he can miss the chair. As it is seven o'clock, I'm going to call meeting to order. If everyone will please kindly stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing afterward.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I actually remain standing for a moment of silence. I remember the families whose lives have been impacted by gun violence in Nashville, particularly the families of the children who were murdered in schools.
Thank you, everybody. Please have a seat and we'll go ahead and get started. Going to go ahead and announce that the meeting is being recorded via Zoom. The recording will be uploaded later to the Chairman's YouTube channel for viewing, to the Township's YouTube channel for viewing, excuse me. Chairman's report, the Board met an executive session before this meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. There are no public hearings this evening. I am going to do emergency reports and then we'll switch the calendar up a little bit. So Steve Wassle, Sergeant Steve Wassle, please come up and join us. And if you'll speak directly into the microphone, please.
Welcome.
Good to see you.
Good to see you all. Thank you very much for having me. So real quickly for the East Goshen Township report for the month of June. Calls for service in June of 2022 were a total of 1,169. For East Goshen Township, June of 2022, we had 621 calls. That's up quite a bit from this time last year where we had 465 calls. So we've seen a kind of a busy month. Summer's been a little bit busier for us around here. Real quickly down to their police blotter, we invite everyone to visit our website and social media sites to learn about the community engagement events that we've participated in. The active cases we're currently seeking assistance from, the public with, and the arrests that have been made, and the crime trend alerts for incidents that are occurring in our area. In particular, two posts regarding crime trends are worth sharing. June 29th, we go posted an advisory warning residence about an increase in thefts of catalytic converters. We're still seeing that trend continuing throughout the counties. Chester County included, Montgomery County, Delaware County, Philadelphia. June 9th, we go posted an advisory warning residence about an increase in thefts from vehicles and thefts of vehicles. Please, we continue to do this monthly, I think. Please keep valuables out of your vehicles, keys, lock your cars up, remember to lock vehicle doors at all times. In East Goshen, of course, the park and the YMCA are target areas. We find them to be hotspots for this type of activity. So we want to make sure everybody gets the word out there to be very mindful when parking in those areas. We do want to extend a great thank you to East Goshen Township from the Police Department. We'd like to thank them for the purchase and dedication of a bench in East Goshen Park in memory of Noah Dittes, the child of one of our officers who passed away suddenly. We are greatly appreciative of that. Thank you.
So don't go away yet.
I have a couple more things to.
Oh, good.
Yeah, let me wrap that up. Yeah, absolutely.
You know why you're going away?
Some of the significant events during the last month on July 1st, members from the West Tennesse Goshen Regional Police Department received a commendation from the Chester County District Attorney's Office. The commendation was in recognition of their extraordinary efforts in the investigation, arrest, and prosecution of the attempted murder of a nine-year-old in West Town Township back on November 23rd of 2020. In addition to the police work involved, the officers and their families collected donations to make sure the child had the resources needed to recover from this horrific incident. When she awoke from her coma, she asked about her bike. The officers located the bike, paid to have it fixed and cleaned up for her, and then it was delivered back to her. So, you know, that was a very nice recognition on behalf also of the Chester County District Attorney's Office. Quick summary of the police blotter material for June for East Goshen specifically, we had nine thefts, including several catalytic converters. Seventeen disturbance calls, four missing juveniles, all have been located. We did have one missing adult that is currently still missing, and I don't have any more update information on that one as of right now. We had 12 fraud investigations, four drug-related investigations resulting in two arrests. We had three alcohol-related investigations resulting in three arrests. We had four criminal mischief investigations resulting in one arrest, and we had four trespassing investigations, which was kind of an unusual trend for that month for whatever reason, but you know, we don't get that many trespassing complaints, but for some reason we had four just in East Goshen alone in that one month. So, and that's about all I have right now.
I just wanted to make a quick comment to the board. We haven't gotten this this month's executive summary yet, and that's because Brenda is going through the accreditation preparation, reaccreditation preparation. So once she's gone through all of that, that's going to be tomorrow. And once she's gone through all that, we'll have that report probably early next week, just so you all know. Does anybody have any questions?
I have two things. Sergeant Wassle, first of all, on behalf of the board, I want to congratulate you on that commendation. I was very proud moment for us to see that in all the publications and the recognition that you guys got for that. That was wonderful. The missing juveniles, are most of those runaways or what are, how do you characterize the?
I would say it's safe to say most of them are runaways. Yeah. And we tend to, you know, of course, most of the time, pretty quickly they return or we know where they're located and.
What's the standard when you get a call on that? Do you, is it, you know, you know, you always hear the, on television, they always say, well, we can't do anything for 24 hours.
No, 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 that's not true at all, of course. Now, we take the report seriously right away, and we start actively investigating what information we have and getting as much as we can as quickly as possible. You know, thankfully, if they're don't, and it's an emergency and these exigent circumstances are present, especially for a juvenile possibly in danger, you know, we are sometimes able to track them with their cell phones. And a lot of times, of course, that's very beneficial.
You ruined my belief in television.
No, we don't wait, but we definitely don't wait 24 hours.
John, there are still cartoons. Sergeant Wassle, I'm curious about these catalytic converters, and I was interested to hear, we had, I thought you said eight or nine here in East Goshen?
Well, we had six thefts now, six thefts, but not all of them were catalytic converters. I don't know the exact number which of how many were.
Yeah, I was just curious, how long and is it torch used? Is it, is the?
No, they literally have, they literally have saws that they fly runner, they slide right under these, a lot of them are trucks and SUVs that are higher sitting because much easier to get under, right? Slide, run under, cut it off, and they're out. They're quick.
Two or three minutes.
Yeah, they're quick. Yep. Yeah, they're very quick. Yeah.
We just, my, my, I have family over in Summit House, and they, yesterday, last night.
Yeah, it was two nights ago. Yeah, we took the report yesterday morning.
Yes, yes, yes. And.
So there's one for July.
That was what, that was three of them now in the past approximate.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how many we have for the month of July. And, but again, we're not the only ones getting hit. You know, West Coast and Westchester, all the areas are getting hit around here.
Does anybody have any other questions for Sergeant Wassle? I echo David's comments. We're very proud of your commendations. And we wanted, Dick Pomerantz and I both wanted to be there, but we were, we were present, we were, we were available, but it was not a situation that we were able to come to for some reason. So, so we were there in spirit with you all.
Thank you very much.
Just so you know. And thanks very much. Does the public have any questions for Sergeant Wassle? Anybody in the Zoom room? Seeing none, I would like to say thank you so much for coming out.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Be safe. Thank you. And could we have Grant Everhart come on up? He's better looking. Sorry. No.
You won't leave that one down.
It's good to see you. Welcome, everybody. So the June report for the Goshen Fire Company, we had a total of 43 fire responses, 32 fire police responses, and 386 EMS responses. The 386 EMS responses is our second highest month in history for, for the fire company. We continue to see EMS calls running about 17% ahead of last year. Part of that is, is just more activity post COVID, but also it's attributed to the fact that we now have the third ambulance staff during the daytime, and we are able to pick up during peak periods where we would typically have third calls in our district instead of using a mutual aid company to respond. That's our ambulance handling, handling those calls. Fire responses are still trending slightly lower than last year, but automatic alarms are continuing at a higher than normal rate. We're, for the year, we're at about 50% of our calls being automatic fire alarms. Last year it was 44%. Significant calls for the month, we had an auto accident with entrapment at Westchester Pike and Westtown Way. We had another one on Route 202. And then we assisted multiple companies for a house fire on Birmingham Road in Birmingham Township. Events that we supported, obviously, we were there for East Goshen Community Day, which was a great, great turnout. And same day, we also handled, we assisted the helicopter museum with their rotor fest. And then there was an honor flight ceremony at St. Simon and Jude that we helped with as well. The other big thing is we're getting ready for the fair. So a couple of weeks countdowns on, and we're starting to put things together. The tents are going up, and we're looking forward to a great week, weather permitting.
And the new sign is broadcasting very, very clearly.
Yes.
Good.
It was a little glitchy. We just.
Yeah, I know it was down for a while, but today it was just shining and informative.
Yeah, we're really, really happy with it. So as I mentioned last month, if, you know, there's a, you know, these community event, you know, for East Ocean or, you know, West Ocean, or whoever would happy to put that up there.
Can we submit that through you, Grant?
Yeah, just send me an email.
That's good. I noticed that on the sign that coming from the 202 interchange facing Green Hill, I saw that there was a little box in the bottom right corner.
Yes.
That is.
They ran a screw through it.
Glitchy.
They, they did.
So is it going to be repairable then? Okay. Yeah, I'm like, oh geez.
The technician came out yesterday.
Okay.
So it's.
They knew at the moment it happened.
I'm sure. So, but that'll get fixed whenever they get the part.
So with the, with the ambulance, with the EMS calls going up, it is because you feel that that third team is making a difference in that regard?
Yes, very much.
And that's overall good for us, correct?
It is. Quicker response, you know, we're coming, you know, you're next to ambulance. You know, everybody's busy, Goodfellow's busy, everybody's, there was a call off of Phoenixville Pike that was covered by Good Fellowship's ambulance out of West Bradford. It's just resources are thin.
Okay.
So to have three staffed ambulances in our own district really makes a difference in response time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else have any questions for Grant?
No.
Use mic, microphone.
Automatic alarm report. I haven't really been tracking those. Is that, I mean, there were 24 of them for the month, and I was just looking at the one, like there were four from one location. Is that a fairly normal? And what do we do to kind of try to not have that many?
So I think the four, the one was maybe that 1,008 Westchester.
One, 108, yeah.
Yeah, that's surprisingly, that's Rolling Green Cemetery.
Really?
Really.
There's a pun there, I'm sure.
They had an old, old, old system. It just kept tripping, tripping. The West Ocean Codes official went out there. I believe they read them the riot act. It seems to have calmed down.
But you have to roll on every one of those, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we do. So typically, when we have that kind of pattern, that was, that was just one month. It just started and stopped. We'll contact the Codes official and have them handle it.
Most of the other ones, I mean, probably some of the senior living facilities, right?
Yeah, so in East Goshen, the, the top response locations would be Wellington, mostly due to the construction as they're building their memory care unit. They, they activated it a number of times. Comcast at Booton Wilson, for some reason, has become a problem. And then.
Their own system.
Yeah, they, they were quiet for years, and now we've had six this year, I think. And then Bellingham, we've had a few there. So, yeah, the assisted livings tend to be more frequent than other places.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
There are no other questions, then we can let Grant go off to his next meeting. Thank you so much. Looking forward to the fair, yeah. Carmen, would you please come up? I would, because you're you're the apple of my eye with all of your bees.
Good evening, board. Good evening, residents.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Grant gave the Goshen reports. Unfortunately for Malvern, I don't have one. Derek is well aware of it. They had sort of a management change, and they lost the person that was doing it. Been in contact with Derek, and he's been very proactive, and I think they finally hired somebody that is going to be responsible for issuing the reports. So hopefully, hopefully next month, we should have them back on a regular basis. The only report I have tonight would be Good Fellowship, and they seem, their call volume is about the same. They had 49 in East Goshen, which is about their eight, nine percent. If I could take a moment to expand upon the automatic alarms, you are correct. It is a stress on the system. But what happens now with codes being like so much on the ball, Codes Department in East Goshen at least, tracks these calls, they get what they can get, and then they get a warning, then they get a fine. So at some point, if they continue having them, it does cost them considerable money. So I will compliment Derek, and I will compliment the Codes Department under Duane for bringing that forth. And with that, I'll just end it by saying, be safe.
Be safe.
Any questions?
Any questions for Carmen?
As always, I serve at the pleasure of the board.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carmen. By the way, when I was at the Malvern Fair the other day, and they, when you pull in, they ask for some contributions to Malvern Fire Company. So putting a couple bucks in the pot, Matt, who is with Malvern Fire Company, I don't know Matt's capacity, but he, he said, thanks very much for the contribution from East Goshen. It means a lot to us. So our contribution to Malvern Fire Company, they're appreciative.
That was nice. I'm going to shuffle the schedule just a little bit so that we can move up a bit of new business. So going to shuffle 10A under new business, consider the Hicks Farm Settlement Agreement. And so Derek, you want to?
Sure. This is obviously Madam Chair, at the beginning of the year, the board set out to vote, vote it 3-2 to explore the unwinding of the eminent domain case. And it was agreed upon that the best route of that was a settlement agreement, exploring a settlement agreement. Lot of back and forth over the last six months or so. But we've, looks like we finally were able to come to terms with the Hicks family, and I will ask Michael Gill if he can come up to the podium, just in case there are any specific questions. And I don't know if Michael wants to add anything, what I just said, but I think it's a pretty simple summary, but that's essentially what brings us to this settlement agreement tonight.
That's essentially correct. Thank you very much, members of the board, members of the public. When the board set out to relinquish or to revoke the condemnations that the board authorized back in June of 2021, and there were two of those, one for property owned by Peter and Philip Hicks, and one for an adjacent property owned by William Hicks. When the board set out to do that, section 308 of the eminent domain code was triggered. That is a section which contemplates revocations or relinquishments of condemnations. There is a subsection in that section of the eminent domain code, which generally reads that where condemned property is relinquished, the condemned knee shall be reimbursed for reasonable costs and fees, which they've incurred as a result of the condemnation. That opened up a discussion with counsel for the condemned knees. In each case, it's the same counsel. They made a statement about what the amount of those fees and costs were. There was some back and forth, and the figures which are recited in these draft settlement agreements are the result of those discussions. So the matter that's before the board this evening is to vote to approve those settlements and to allow for notice of those settlements to be recorded in the office of the Recorder of Deeds. What that will do is give notice to the world entire that whatever property interest the township acquired in June of 2021 has now been relinquished and returned to the condemned knees, and it's essentially as if the condemnations had never occurred.
Thank you, Michael. One question that has been posed. Dave, can you tell us where this money is going to be coming from? What fund it's going to be coming from? General Fund, okay. Thank you.
Very good.
Does, does anybody on the board have any questions regarding this legal matter?
As I indicated, Madam Chair, I do have a, I don't have a specific, but I do have a statement I would like to read.
Should we, should we have a motion on the table?
When the time comes, yes.
Should we have a motion on the table before we have that discussion?
That, that would be appropriate, and there are two separate agreements. So if the board would like to entertain two separate motions, that would also be appropriate. The first one I have in my pile of two is the Peter and Philip Hicks matter. So, but I'm not sure which one you have listed as 10A or 10B.
Motion one is William.
Motion one should be William Hicks.
I'll reach up on my pile.
And motion two should be Philip and Peter Hicks.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the settlement of the condemnation case with William I Hicks and authorize the chairperson of the board to sign the settlement agreement documents as well as all other related documents.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And should we go ahead, can we package these together or no?
You can. Board action is board action from my perspective, unless the township solicitor disagrees. There are two separate agreements, so you can do it as two, or you can do it as one. Madam Chair, I move we approve the settlement, the condemnation case with Philip Hicks and Peter M. Hicks, and authorize the chairperson of the board to sign the settlement agreement documents as well as all other related documents.
Second the motion.
Thank you. Okay, so we have two motions on the table. They are the same essential motion. Are there any questions from board members?
Mike?
Mike, you?
Yeah, I'd like to make a statement if I might.
I'd actually like to amend both motions to recognize the amount of the settlement agreement in addition to the terms. So the, it should read that I move the approve the settlement conditions and compensation in the amount of $26,000 for each one of those.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight thousand for a total of $56,000.
Thank you for that, David. And that amendment is acceptable? Thank you. All right. David, did you have a statement or just Mike?
Mike, I'll have a comment as well.
Okay. Mike, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, sure. I'm going to read a statement. Madam Chair, Michelle, thank you. And this, I often will write something down if I, on a particular issue, as I've done in the past, so I can be a bit more cogent. The statement represents sole opinion of one supervisor member of this board of supervisors, myself. My vote will be no to not accept the subject settlement agreements, two of them, each of them, before the board supervises the season for the following reasoning and position, and which when a member of the governing body votes in the minority warrants an explanation to our community residents. I stated no pine over the course of this matter these past two plus years that the use of eminent domain in this matter was a valid and legal means to accomplish a benefit for the good of the community, present and future. And I have said previously that perhaps akin to capital punishment, that while I am conflicted in that I oppose both, there are times and events that justify the exercise of these legal but absolute powers. I refute the notion that the pedestrian and bicycle trail on Paley Pike across the front edge of the subject properties would negatively impact the equestrian business, the horses and the open, open space farm-like character. This premise from my perspective remains a red herring. Diminution of the property holdings, certainly within the rights of the owner, speaks to the red herring. In fact, were the trail to be completed, it may have been a stimulus to the business. It is also noteworthy that the subject properties ostensibly remain on the market for future development sands, a conservation easement to guarantee the future open space character, and stated interest of the property owners to preserve the legacy of the, their farm. The township worked in good faith and in a professional manner to address the concerns put forth by the property owners, a double row fence, landscaping, electrical, electric controlled fence, and others, at a cost of the township of almost the same amount as the assessed valuation of the land to be taken. In my opinion, the community present and future has and will suffer from this inward looking position as this trail, were it to be completed as planned, could serve as the east-west connector for future trail connections north and south within the township, as well as beyond the township lines, and which our recent survey results confirm. The under construction alternate trail is not a solution, but rather an accommodation that ultimately will cost more if completed before the end of this decade, than the completion of the trail as planned, and understanding the $56,000 settlement this evening is a small fraction of the lost cost. Estimated approximately $600,000 plus or minus in the prior engineering and design and loss of grants to the original trail, so-called segment B. This Paley Pike Trail as a plan and if completed effectively, was not a trail to nowhere, but rather a bridge to the future allowing people to safely recreate and increasingly in the future, practically get from one part of the community to the other, and with the increasing use of e-bikes, further validating the trail functional connectivity. I'm disappointed this board could not reach a consensus on this matter for present, future benefits to this community. If I could enter that into the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will also be voting no on both of these motions. I voted in favor of the condemnation as I considered the trail central infrastructure for our community and important to the future of our community. Planned over years and years and years, I frankly wanted to pursue the condemnation to its legal conclusion. And realize that I am now in a minority vote. I feel that we've created an unsafe condition to the trail users and school students, and I plan to be vocal about this in the future.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board regarding the matter for us, which is approving the settlement of the condemnation case? Are there any questions regarding this motion in the room or on the Zoom room? There is a hand up, and as long as this question relates to the, the motion, go ahead. Russ, is that you?
Yeah.
How are you?
Good, good. Does, um, does this a agreement that you're getting ready to go into, does that take, does that take into account some of the paving that has to be removed, or maybe it doesn't have to remove, but that's on their property?
That's not on the Hicks property. That's on the adjacent property.
Okay.
It does not take into account any removal of that.
Yeah.
No, that's it.
I was just, from what I can see from my side. Hey, Mike, you mentioned something in your little dissertation there that the farm, it could be possibly sold? Is there anything that in, in the agreement or anything, anything in the township that says they can't sell the farm?
Russ, there is nothing in the agreement, Michael Gill will confirm that, that, that talks about the rights of the property owner to sell or convey their property. It's not part of the settlement agreement. That's, that's totally independent. My point was that the, the property owners have expressed an interest to preserve the legacy of their farm and the open space character, but over time, they have diminished at the property by selling various portions of it, further bringing suburbia closer to their equestrian operation through the YMCA, the bank, YM, QVC parking lot to sale to, then the Hankin property, potentially for apartments which the township turned down.
That property was owned by a different family member.
But it was part of the Hicks. It's all part of the Hicks.
It's not part of the Hicks. That was a different family member. The, the family members that are before us.
Yeah.
Are William and Peter and.
Yeah, and, and then. Thanks, Michelle. And then specific to those two properties, there are no guarantees that they were going to remain undeveloped in the future without a conservation easement to protect them. Uh the open space character were the equestrian operation, so it is open for development should the property owners decide at any time to liquidate.
Russ, they, the op, the option is there for the owners of the property to do with their property as they so choose. If they choose a, a conservancy option, that is their choice and that's something that they can exercise at any time in addition to selling to a developer at any time.
Right.
So that's something that has to be allowed to happen.
Sure.
It's at the hands of the uh of the owners and if the township wants to purchase open space and it's available at that time um and there's money in the coffers or a bond is issued, so be it. So as, does that answer all of your questions?
Yeah, it's, it's the only reason, I didn't mean to start anything. It just says this has come up several times in the past couple of years. And I just wanted to get some kind of a better understanding for myself.
Okay.
Understand some of these reasons that the board has presented. And I thank you for answering my question.
Thanks, Russ.
No problem, Russ. Uh could you add a statement?
Yeah, I just have a quick question in regards to Mike's statement. That if we do pursue an alternate route, which we have been discussing, we will still be eligible for grant dollars there, correct?
Technically, yes.
Thanks.
Okay, if there are no other questions, if you would like to come up and state your name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Brittany Shookstaff from nine seventeen Warrior Road. I just had a question. Um if they do develop the property, does the easement still stay?
There is no easement.
Whatever that, that pathway is that you guys are giving them the money for, if they sell it, does.
There is no pathway, Stephanie. And that was the, the whole premise for the eminent domain taking of the property, if you will, that the township, because we couldn't negotiate a, an easement with them for that strip of land. We filed a declaration of eminent domain to take that property for community good. And the, the property owners challenged that, but there's been no construction. The path, uh the, the, the planned trail, that so-called segment B will not be constructed there at the present time based upon both the settlement agreement uh and future decisions of the board, which presently are not um receptive to that completing that trail at that location. So there is, there's nothing to be removed. There's no path that exists there.
Oh, okay. So we just gave them money for?
We, the, the settlement had to do with giving them compensation for the cost of their legal legal expenses associated with having to file a uh counter suit, if you will, to uh the taking by the township. So they, they contested that in court and uh the township has agreed that they, they will settle the matter with them. But in such settlement, they will provide some compensation as, as agreed to here and in those agreements um to accomplish this settlement.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood.
Let me ask you a question, Derek. What's the zoning of that property, you know?
Banks.
Business Park.
Business Park.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
So seeing no other questions, I'm gonna call the question uh on the matter number one to approve the settlement for William Hicks and on the matter number two, to approve the settlement with Philip and Peter Hicks. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
And those against?
No.
No.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion passes three to two.
Okay, uh so um the city, but there are two documents for each matter, uh which will require your signature.
Yes.
Uh and then uh the township solicitor can take those and I'll retrieve them from Bill tomorrow.
Do you need me to sign them now? We can take a moment and I can sign it now.
Sure, if you're.
Just make that happen.
Interrupt the flow of your meeting.
No, that's okay. We can just take one moment here.
Our meeting is.
The flow of our meeting. I'll tell you what, um I, I can go ahead and sign that and in the meantime, uh Dave, do you want to add and start on the financial report?
Like Madam Chair, as of June thirtieth, net of pass throughs, the general fund had year-to-date revenues six million eight hundred eight thousand one hundred twenty-eight dollars and expenses of five million three hundred seventy-five thousand two hundred and thirty-eight dollars for a surplus of one million four hundred thirty-two thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. As of June thirtieth, the general fund balance was seven million two hundred seventy-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. Our actual year-to-date revenue is finished uh four percent higher than budget and three percent higher than prior year. Increase in building permits were about ten percent ahead of last year. P and R programs and EIT revenue are driving the increase versus the budget. Uh our total year-to-date expenses are two percent over budget and fourteen percent higher than prior year-to-date. Uh park landscaping, tree removal and unanticipated retirement have driven the year-to-date expenses higher than budget. Uh the net result from actual operations year dated June is a hundred and forty-seven thousand higher than was budgeted. The outlook and conclusion through six months, twenty twenty-two, uh East Goshen Township continues to manage expenses to budget, except for a few unforeseen costs. Even in our current inflationary environment, I believe last I saw was nine point one percent trailing twelve month inflation. With continued expense management, I still believe that East Goshen can still meet our twenty twenty-two general fund budget expectations.
Question, Dave?
Yes.
Is this a timing issue? The first paragraph uh has a surplus one point four million. That's a lot of money and we're at the half-year point, right?
Yeah, we get a lot of our revenue, tax revenue.
So it's timing?
Yeah. Yep. And then there's a, there's a little bump in August and then also November, but primarily after that, the expenses stay flat and we just get a little bit more revenue.
I read. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Dave. Dave, um the tree removal and, and Marcus here, um the tree removal has appeared a couple of times on the financial report. I was, I was curious as to how we budget that, um because it's a, it's an, do we, have we inventoried tree removal? Do we phase it in? Um and I know we self-perform a lot of that, that work. Do we have a process? Because it, it's kind of a big budget item every year, right?
It sure seems to be. Mark does his uh, I put in an original figure based on prior years and try and uh get a gauge of the trend and then Mark reviews it for our tree removal budget and then also kind of things in the park and then around the township and takes his best guess and then we see what actually residents need.
Yeah.
And there's a lot that the Public Works guys do, but then there's certain stuff that we do contract out.
Right. So uh is there any way to inventory that, Mark, to just know what we're gonna do in a year and?
We try to inventory on the ashtray, like it counts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, they look, one may look good today, but it's not next year.
But the, the Emerald Ash for the ash trees, that was about as close to an inventory to be proactive as you could get because we, we knew where they were in, in the township and in many locations because they were street trees, particularly in the, in the northern part of the township. But these, these, these budgets for tree management, the municipalities try to be proactive, but it's so uncertain and, and if we have a storm event, then I mean, that can wreak havoc with the budget uh at any given time. Fortunately, we haven't had any severe events this year, so it's, it's, it's it's a big number, but it's um, it's yeah, it's all, it's usually not enough because it's, we're, it's, this is William Penn country, remember?
Yeah. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No. All right.
I do have one other question. I'm sorry, I forgot my notes here.
Microphone.
The, uh, thank you. The bond um fund balance right now. Have we looked at the anticipated outstanding expenses in those projects against that fund balance and how we doing? Do we, we okay with that?
Yeah, we are, all of the projects that we have will expend all of the bond funds most likely. Yeah, that, we, this is a combination of sewer as well as a general fund on. And then we'll have to add more money from the general fund or the infrastructure fund on top to complete the projects.
Yeah, so bottom, bottom line is we won't have any problem in the next year.
It'll be spent.
To spending that bond money.
Yeah.
And then a lot some.
And the biggest depending uh items are gonna be some of the grants that we've gone out for to see if we get those or not, which would help us carry the bond a little longer, a little further. Yeah.
Okay. And the treasurer's report. The bills. So.
So general fund revenue over this period was again driven by the earned income and real estate transfer tax receipts. Parks and rec fees are still up um and building permits are still going strong. Expenses for this period include our rego contribution and debt payment, uh which should be the final one, uh right? And then insurance premiums, pension contributions, a crusher rental, um which I got to see in operation. It was pretty impressive. Yeah. And uh, and then is that, that really helps us save also because we're recycling basically our, our existing materials to use in other jobs. Um and then our ongoing operating reset expenses. Uh the capital reserve fund did incur hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars roughly for a Hercule Mill Dam construction. And if you haven't seen it, I would take a look.
It looks fantastic. Okay.
The grass really came in good where the guys that.
Sure did. Sure did.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the receipts and approve the expenditures as presented in the expenditure register and as summarized in the treasurer's report.
I'll second.
Thank you. And do we have any questions regarding the bills?
I just have one, if I might. Uh if you want to look at it, you don't have to. I can give you the, the dope of it here. It's a batch two or three, page fifteen, Orbus Corporation, fifty-one hundred dollars. I think it's five thousand ninety dollars, something like that for five hundred. Uh I think they're fourteen gallon recycling bins. My question was, since we've had the discussion about recycling bins in the past about covered lids, uh are these available? Could we have purchased these with the top to, you know, kind of address some of the concerns that have been brought up by the SAC and, and, and others about containing the recycling bin? Are they available with the top on them that we could have otherwise purchased them? Not that so. Yeah, okay. That was just a question.
And they were under ten dollars. The ones that we would be getting are sixty dollars plus.
Well, they were bigger, they were bigger bin, but I didn't know in that size whether for three bucks more or four bucks more, you could get a lid for them that would contain. Okay, it was just a question. Thank you.
Any, does anybody else have any questions regarding the bills? David, do you have any questions? Are there questions uh from the public in the room or in the Zoom room? Seeing none, I'm gonna call a question. Those in favor pay the bills?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Um now under old business, uh nine A, consider the passage of ordinance establishing the environmental sustainability advisory council to replace the sustainability advisory committee.
Madam Chair, I would move that we adopt resolution number.
Mr. Lynch, if you could, um we should do the ordinance first.
Oh, I see the ordinance above it. There you go. But what, Madam Chair, to get it on the table?
How about that, how about that uh number though anyway? What number are we gonna be using?
We're gonna do twenty twenty-two dash fourteen.
Is that the resolution?
That's the resolution.
Dash fourteen for the resolution.
Fourteen and the ordinance number.
So, so Derek, on the new law section of E code three sixty, it looks like the last ordinance you adopted was one twenty-nine dash C dash twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, one twenty-nine D dash twenty twenty-two then. D dash twenty twenty. So Madam Chair, if I might, uh on this matter, uh to get it started, as you know, this has been under discussion for some time, uh last few meetings. Madam Chair, I would move that we adopt ordinance number one twenty-nine D twenty twenty-two. An ordinance of the township of East Goshen Chester County, Pennsylvania, creating a new chapter seventeen of the East Goshen Township Code of Ordinances titled Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Council, which creates and provides operating procedures and powers for a new environmental and sustainability advisory council.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, um a little bit of discussion on this. This is something that we've, we've discussed actually for the past several months. And uh if anybody has any other comments, I'm, I'm very excited about the formation of this new council.
Very, very briefly, just for anybody that hasn't tuned in the last few months. The board has looked at um the various, uh what we refer to as ABC's advisory boards and commissions looking at efficiencies uh in a number of areas administratively and resource wise, uh whether or not we could um consolidate any. And this one came to the forefront uh with the existing sustainability action committee and um the value added of uh charges, if you will, of an environmental advisory council, which is a legislated body uh recognized uh and, and which not every municipality has adopted uh or enacted. And uh we thought that it would be a great opportunity to uh broaden the, the mission of this environmental related activity within the township um and combine it with our sustainability uh mission uh and members of the committee. So this is the culmination of that into this legislative ordinance document.
Thanks, Mike. Are there any questions regarding the formation of the ESAC on the board?
None.
Or in the room or in the Zoom room?
Madam Chair, I, I would just like to um inform the board that since this is an ordinance, it did require public notice, so it was published in the daily local news on July seventh of this year.
Thank you.
Just one time it was necessary.
That is correct.
Excellent. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the question then to pass the ordinance, uh ordinance number one twenty-nine D dash twenty twenty-two uh to create the new ESAC, Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Council. Those in favor, aye.
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 And no opposed. Thank you very much. And um I think we have a resolution now.
Madam Chair, I would move that we adopt resolution uh twenty twenty-two, number fourteen, titled the resolution of the Board of Supervisors of East Goshen Township, Chester County, Pennsylvania, appointing the founding members of the Environmental and Sustainability Advisory Council.
I'll second.
And, and that resolution simply lays out the organization of the council, the first council formation and, and subsequent uh machinations as it, as it moves forward. We're not appointing the members tonight, are we?
So I think that we should probably consider tabling this resolution so that we can.
We can appoint the.
We can form, we can adopt the resolution without appointing the members at this point?
This resolution is, is slated to uh appoint the founding members of the.
Well, then I would, in that case, I would rescind my motion until we have, the board has further opportunity to deliberate on the final uh slate for the uh first appointment.
Bill, can I ask you this? Do, do they have to appoint everyone? Like all, all this, all seven members or can they appoint?
You could appoint a portion of them at this point.
Okay.
We're not, I don't know, we're ready to do that. The problem is that some of the members are on for the end of this year. Some of the member, members rotate off in twenty twenty-three and some of the members rotate off in twenty-four and we might want to consider, before we appoint people, we might want to consider who we want to have in each of those categories.
I agree. I think that we need to table this mo, table this resolution for the, for this evening and then find out when each of the um individuals are scheduled to have their term limit up. Uh not limit, but their term expires rather and also to determine the last member of that board.
So let me, let me just ask a question. Uh um as our solicitor, to our solicitor, Bill, um we, the fact that we're forming a new a body here uh and appointing individuals, the existing term, the terms existing for the, in this case, the sustainability advisory committee, isn't that, aren't those terms now, are they moot relative to this? Because we will be dissolving the SAC uh with this action or is there, is there another motion to dissolve the SAC?
No, the, the SAC is dissolved by enactment of the ordinance that you just passed.
Okay, so they are now officially dissolved, so those terms are a moot point.
Those, those, okay, so those. Unless you wanted to continue them along for a commensurate term in the ESAC, but that is your prerogative. You have no obligation to do so. You can appoint members as you see fit.
The motion to retain the existing term of the existing board members.
The terms might not.
But they may not sync with this news, so maybe we just need need to get.
We need to look, we need to look at this further.
We're gonna have to cancel the meeting Monday. I'm gonna have twenty fifth. The Sustainability Advisory Committee was the twenty fifth.
Are we?
Which was going to be the new.
So they they can't be.
Cancelled just about every other.
I'm I'm just letting you know.
Sometime, but is it possible to appoint the chair and the vice chair only? And the rest of the committee?
I think we're doing this a little scattered at this point. I think we should wait.
I think we need a little bit.
Usually we let the committee elect your.
But this ordinance is different. I think.
The EAC requires the board to appoint.
To appoint the chair.
All right.
Yeah, legislated.
We really have a lot to think of.
We do have some, we do have some deliberation on that then.
So no SAC committee, they no longer exist. Michelle will deliberate, we'll discuss this further and bring it up in our next meeting as as staff and and council tries to get us. In sync.
Okay.
All right.
We will, we'll provide a copy of this or this resolution for your next meeting as well, and maybe we can fill in the names.
At that point.
Yep.
I sure hope so.
Email Christie tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, so sorry to the ESAC for not being able to appoint everybody, but we have a little bit more, a little bit more information to find out. Moving on to.
Progress, oh, progress.
This progress. Moving on to old business B, consider the twenty twenty two sewer rates. And a proposed capital plan. Dave, do you want to take it from there?
Certainly, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last meeting, I proposed a sewer rate adding forty dollars a quarter, which would have made us whole from all of the projects. One point one million dollars that we have ongoing currently. That would have taken care of that in a single year. And the board asked me to sharpen my pencil and see if there was a less. A less impactful way to do it in this inflationary environment, but would still meet our objectives. So after doing so, I I came up with two additional proposals. I still believe the first proposal is the best, but. The second proposal, I believe, would meet our obligations. Fiscally, for for the next two years as well as in the foreseeable future, as far as funding additional capital reserves. So what I've broken down is. Is what we really need to, basically, we've got one point one million dollars in tied up in projects and a projected revenue loss. The increasing the rate by twenty dollars a quarter to the fixed rate from thirty five sixty one to fifty five dollars sixty one cents. Would add an additional one point one revenue, million revenue over two years. So it spaces it out a little bit more and then. After that point, we would be caught up and we would be back to two point three million in our sewer cap reserve. And from there, we could continue to accumulate additional sewer reserves. So this is pretty much not trying to accumulate additional sewer reserves. It's just making up for the one point one million dollars. And additional projects which we currently do not have funded. Those will come out of our sewer cap reserve temporarily. So I'm proposing a twenty dollar increase to the estimated, the fixed rate. For the July billing of twenty twenty two.
And keeping the variable rate the same at this time.
Correct. This is about an eleven point eight percent average, single family dwelling bill increase.
Let me say two things. First of all, I don't agree with you, Dave, on going for it all at once. We've had that discussion. I do appreciate the work you put in. Your Excel chart must have been smoking when you did this, and thank you for doing it.
Certainly.
I would, I would offer the comment that I I do respect our Director of Finance's analysis. And 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 trying to manage our finances as effectively as is he can vision them. I would like to have seen the full increase at at this point in time, but I'm respectful of. The circumstances and the inflationary environment as well, John. I would say this, that in, if if we adopt this tonight. That. This is annually reevaluated. And this infrastructure is is aging and it's increasingly expensive. Our public works and our consultants, our plan operator do a, an outstanding job, our municipal authority. Our invested, active, very experienced members that oversee the operation. The DEP, Department of Environmental Protection appreciates the the manner and care in which we take care of the system. But it still doesn't mean that there aren't contingencies and big ones that can occur with failures, like we're having at the Hershey's Mill Estates for now one point six million dollars. There's been discussion and comments have made to me over time, and of course, as board members, we've been observing the larger community. With the sale of these systems to private entities, particularly your private public entities, if you will, stockholding entities. Such as Aqua PA. They're controversial, they're complicated, it removes the ownership. The service level and all control. We've seen some very substantial rates from Aqua after acquisitions. One of the nearby townships I used to be involved in just had a forty seven percent rate increase. So we feel that, I think, as a board and the municipal authority, that maintaining the ownership of the municipal of the operation, our sewer system. Is in the best interest of all our residents in the community at this time and for for the foreseeable future. But it doesn't mean that we can just subsidize and and put our heads in the sand relative to the real cost. And these are real costs. These are not fabricated. The numbers speak for themselves. I do want to make one comment also relative to a nice table that Dave put together of quarterly sewer bills. For the average single family household amongst some of our neighbors. And as I look at it, East Ocean Township falls. Right in, almost in the middle, where at about a hundred and ninety dollars per quarter.
Per year.
Per, per quarter, quarter, per quarter, compared to some municipalities that are as high as four hundred and eighty six dollars, three hundred and sixty six dollars per quarter. But particularly, I wanted to comment, and I don't know the answer to this, but over the few municipalities that are lower presently in their quarterly. Average, single family household sewer rates, those being the borough by a few dollars. East Whiteland, West Ocean, Yugland and West Whiteland. An important component of that, which we don't know the answer to, is how substantial their debt load is. Because you can continue to borrow against your obligations for your sewer operation. Maintain a larger debt profile while at the same time keeping your current rates lower. It's kind of a game and it's, and you're borrowing and paying down the road, future customers instead of the current customers paying. A fair share. So we don't know what the debt load is for those lower municipalities. And I've asked Dave just to be, to understand it better, whether or not that plays into it. I think it might, but I could be wrong. But overall, I think this is a smart decision by the board to be proactive. We've got to do it. And nobody wants to pay more, but no different than other services. This is not a tax, this is a service, a direct service, and obviously, it's an essential one. So I'm I'm very appreciative of what Dave has done and appreciative of the board and support of this as well as the municipal authority.
Yeah, I did find some interesting recommendations made by the Finance Department of the Borough to the Borough Council in September of twenty twenty. Which was that their numbers for implant and non-plant repairs and reconstructions, equipment and maintenance with associated costs over the last five years. Indicated a greater need than is sustained by current billing rates. They recommended a capital improvement plan should be developed by waste wastewater staff and outside engineers. They recommended a pay as you go capital should be built into the rate base, along with a revenue stream to generate a capital reserve. They currently have none. So as soon as, as soon as they need it, and then something goes bad, they're gonna be in debt. And their rates are gonna go up. So I'm glad that the board has allowed me to put this together and. They actually advocated for a fifteen point six percent increase in their first billing in twenty twenty one and then a six point five percent thereafter. And I'm recommending eleven point eight one time.
Okay, and David, do you have any comments?
I have just two questions. One, as last time we talked about this, we talked about the importance of communication to the residents. About the increase and I think, Dave, when you presented this, you said in the July billing, and it is July, right? So we're talking about.
This month.
This increase, if we approve this in the, in the billing in July, so.
That's a good point.
Make sure everyone's comfortable with that. Do we have enough time to communicate this effectively to the residents as to why this is happening? Are we gonna, we we can't include a a letter with the billing because we're not doing a whole lot of paper billing now. So are we going to go ahead and incur an expense to to send letters to our residents to communicate the need for this? And clearly, at the same time, we're going to bill.
I I think a letter is warranted to, not just for this increase, but to inform and educate our residents of what this is about. I know I submitted some comments to you, Derek and Dave, about some tonal comments to include in such a letter. I I I would support a a communication rather than just a little blip on our small bill that says your rates are going up. That's not the way we do things in East Ocean, I don't think.
It requires a letter.
Yeah, and we updated also our our latest news to reflect the old sewer memo, and now we've updated it with this one. And we'll change it to what the proposed, if we sign it, as well as do the letter right there. Yeah, absolutely. My question for the board is, I mean, and this is a timing question. Do you want us to go forward with it? And and put our best foot forward with the language, or would you like to review it, or how would you like that to work? Because if you, if if you choose to review it, it's gonna delay it somewhat.
I've given you comments. I trust your your.
I'd like to say a couple of things. First of all, I think David's right. Whatever the cost of a letter, I think our citizens have a right to know.
Absolutely.
At a time. Secondly. Do we have this chart, Dave, that we can put it up? It should be up on the the screen if you can do that. For people to see it.
It's in the packet somewhere that'll show.
What I wanted to point out is Mike is, Mike is dead right here. The three in red are excessively higher than our quarterly costs.
Yep.
And they're all Aqua customers. So if we sell out to Aqua sometime in the future.
Usually.
Come in and sock it to our people.
That's right. So my proposal, after multiple meetings discussing with municipal authority and their expertise. Of funding our system for the long term without having to be in a tight bind and sell to Aqua like so many other municipalities are. The twenty dollars is is the minimal we really would require. But East Bradford, as Mike said, was up forty seven point six percent. Willistown would go up forty forty five point seven percent. This is typically in year three. And then East Whiteland is a hundred and thirty two point nine percent is what they proposed.
It is brutal.
It's what Aqua proposed to.
Does anybody, I I've, we've we've got a member of municipal authority here. Do you want to make any comments now?
You guys, you're getting paid too much.
Just so people know, municipal authority members are not compensated.
To Derek's point, I I don't think we need to have board review, but if you wanna, you know, have. Designate a board member to look at it before it goes out or to represent, I'd be glad to do that as a former English major.
I was an English major too. David, it should be no more than one. Sheet, if we can possibly do that.
Yeah, my my goal would be to be as brief and concise and and. Transparent as possible with that.
Because clearly, I would try and fill up the back page.
You, we need both sides for you.
But your comments are valuable, though, and and we can still get them in there concisely. Okay, so before a motion is made, I'm just gonna point out that twenty dollar increment does increase this. Bill by eleven point eight percent. If we went with fifteen dollars, fifteen dollars would bring us the reserves in three years instead of two. At eight point eight percent, which is the cost of inflation, which is really what the taxpayer bill of rights. Says that we should not increase our, no caution go over the rate of inflation. We have to be mindful of our residents. There are some who can afford, some who cannot. And I would even go as far as saying. I I would like to see this go out now, but with the caveat that it will be effective in quarter four. So my my thought is fifteen dollar rate increase, because that is with, that's within the taxpayers' bill of rights. And starting quarter four.
Question for Dave to do some quick math here. How much revenue would we miss out on if we waited to, if we did what Michelle's proposing on proposal three? If we waited until quarter four to initiate the change, how much revenue are you gonna sell?
It's.
Yeah.
But also too, Madam Chair, if I can add. I don't, I I think it's important to realize that when you're considering the rate increases or increase tonight. You have to consider where we came from and where we're going. And if you look at the past, Dave, what is it, six years, ten years?
From, so speaking about the Bill of Rights, the, from twenty twelve to twenty nineteen, we increased rates an average of point five percent per year. Whereas inflation was one point six percent, which is kind of why we're in this straight.
Right, exactly. At that rate, we weren't covering.
I have a legal question, kind of for Chris, and she's been around longer, but maybe Bill too. What? What what are the legality of that? Because I thought our ordinance did say something about having to change the rates in July. Is that, is that what our word that says currently?
It does.
Okay.
That has to be effective. That will be effective if you have it up there with the, it's chapter one eighty eight. Rates will be changed.
Moving forward, so that this is not something that we have to discuss ever again. I'd like to see an ordinance change that would reflect that this bill will increase at the rate of inflation. In perpetuity until a future board decides.
Really dangerous.
Yeah, I can't support that, Michelle.
The rate of inflation has nothing to do with the de- the deterioration of our infrastructure. I mean, I'm sorry, it doesn't.
But so. In the broad kind of sense it is, but this is very specific, so I can't support that.
Yeah, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that we go with the with the suggestion of of twenty dollars a quarter, communicate it properly. And go ahead with the with the July billing in accordance with the current resolutions.
Mark, what did you want to say?
You need to realize that we expand the plan to twenty ten. And now our twenty twenty two, and that equipment is coming up for replacement. So we're already behind the eight ball. And I thought the day about this numerous times. There's only one version, no after.
Or when?
We're doing some maintenance work together this week on East with Circle, which is that old. And YouTube open, on station, up there, the manhole, the manhole starting interior. So that's something just pop up from the screen. So there's always something pop up in the screen. And it's not that we're not on top of it, on top of it and finding it.
And I think it to to play off of that, Mark, thank you, play off of that. It, based upon what David said about our rate, sewer rate increases over the last six or eight years relative to the. Then inflationary numbers, CPI. The the current rate payers, our our residents have benefited from it. Were we to encounter another Hershey's Mill Estates within the next couple of years, not having adequate funds. We're going to have to go. We're going to have to go and add to our ten million dollars of existing sewer debt. And borrow more, which is going to push it down the road and make future rate payers pay for the current situation. So I am inconsistent with what the borough is doing now. You pay for, for what the system needs with the current red, uh, rate payers who were benefiting from the system, you don't push it on down the road to someone else. So that kind of plays into it a little bit, Michelle. I appreciate your respect.
The fact is, is that if we were to increase this particular rate by inflation every year, we should never be in a situation where we're not funded fully. So that's my point. So
But when you have a year where inflation is one point five percent and you have another Hershey Mill Estate, you're not going to have enough money.
But you have the option with a future board having to make a decision to have an increase. So that's why you can change the, you can change the ordinance, then not have to revisit it until such a time requires that we have to revisit it for, for replenishment. So, but that's fine. That's not the issue tonight. So if someone wants to make a motion, then they should go ahead and make a motion.
Can I ask a question real quick, Madam Chair? Please, Dave?
Yeah.
Yep. I, I remember in the original proposal for the last meeting that the additional forty dollars a month would decrease every year, correct? Would, or we would review it every year with the intention of decrease it five dollars each time. Am I correct on that?
Yep.
Okay, so then in these other proposals, two and three, would that decrease, would we review each year with the intention of decreasing it potentially? Or because we'll still be technically behind, would it be?
Yeah. What I would recommend moving forward is to get rid of the ordinance saying that it has to be July and things like that. I, I think an internal review every year. And based on that internal review of whether we were too high or too low, then I would bring that to the board's attention.
Dave and I had a internal conversation about that as far as getting rid of the requirement to do it every July, not necessarily tie it to anything, but just say, okay, you can kind of look at it internally and see what you're going to do. So it gives us a little bit more leeway.
The ordinance currently kind of ties your hands to be
Well, and then we're, we're doing it right before budget season always. So it just kind of gets jammed up. So I, I think in order to give us more flexibility, I would like to see an ordinance change that minimum to that.
Can we ask you to draft that ordinance change for consideration at future meeting and then act on what's before us tonight?
So if, if I may, I've just been talking to Chris and the July date is when the township is required to read meters and reevaluate average water usage per quarter. And it has always been when the township has also adopted a fee schedule as well. But there is, there was a change. There's an editor's note that there was a change to the rate section. I don't know when it occurred. And there's a provision that says the variable rate for single family dwellings for everyone shall be amended from time to time by the board of supervisors. So it does not explicitly say that the rates need to be changed in July. It says that the average water usage needs to be changed in July or reevaluated.
Okay, and it's the proposed fixed rate that we're dealing with, not the variable rate.
Yeah, and, and what is correct. And let me find the fixed rate.
An interesting
Fixed sewer rate shall be established and set from time to time by resolution of the board of supervisors.
An interesting side adjunct to this is that with our new financial software system. We've, we've inquired about the possibility of getting live data from Aqua and being able to upload that directly so that we don't have to have an average of Q four and Q one and use that for four quarters that we could then work towards an accurate quarterly billing based on actual usage.
That's always been a bone of contention every time we promulgate those rates because of the month we do it in. Some people are, you know, go to Florida for six months and don't use any water and, you know, the, so in order, that would be great.
Always get that question.
That would be, that would eliminate the, the, any arbitrariness to that calculation. I think that'd be
When the board adopted the fourth quarter, first quarter consumption, it was, and that was years ago. It was because people fill their pools and water their lawns and wash their cars in summer and spring and summer. So it, it eliminated that increase and the fluctuation in the consumption. When we go to Edmonds and we have that opportunity, that's a possibility.
Yeah, but the thing is that actually does go down. I mean, that is our wastewater. So we're basically eating the cost of people filling their pools.
Already kind of subsidizing.
Yeah, right.
That's right.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that I think what we, what we, what I'd like to propose is that we go with the twenty dollar recommendation. Um, and that we do it in the fourth quarter, given what our solicitor just informed us. And that gives us time to communicate the increase effectively to our residents by letter.
So the motion?
I'd like to amend that friendly amendment that you will write the letter, Dave.
I will not sign it.
All right, I second that motion.
I'll make that as a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table for a twenty dollar increase effective fourth quarter.
Fixed rate.
Fixed rate with the, with the caveat that we send out a letter prior to that. So that our residents are aware of the increase and the, and the reasoning behind it.
And I will sign it.
And, and with some point before the increase is instituted, we will need a resolution. So this will be back before you just to clarify what you've just said.
Okay. Okay. And I don't think we need another ordinance change than according to the ordinance that's in place right now. I think that's good for us. So, um, is there any more discussion here at the board level?
Motion is second. It's on the table.
Motion second. And are there any questions regarding this rate increase in the room? Or in our Zoom room? Russ, you have a question? You've got a raised hand.
Yeah.
What is your question, sir?
I do, um, gosh, I hate to say this, but I kind of agree with like what Mike was saying.
Hate anything about me.
There, there is stuff, there are some stuff. Yeah, yeah. But the thing is, um, I just don't agree with doing this on a monthly basis, these increases. Because there are people who have pools and gardens all at the same time and only utilize that water in the summertime. And the pool water doesn't go back into the, the pool water does not go back into the drain system.
The, the, this would be an annual, uh, an annual adjustment to the quarterly bill, Russ, for valuation in another year.
Right, and I agree with that. But I just heard some comments that we should do it every month.
No, 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 we don't. We either misheard or I didn't hear that said, but no, that's not, that's not on the table or any discussion related to that. No.
All right, thanks.
Bill, question. So we are not passing that resolution tonight then, right?
You're passing it as a motion to move forward.
With the But I have a resolution. Yeah. No, it's, it's not in the pack, but I have a resolution just in case. So we're not doing that tonight? Okay.
So if I can clarify, then the motion that David presented was to adopt resolution two thousand and twenty two dash thirteen, revising the fee schedule to amend the township sewer rates to fifty five sixty one per quarter fixed and nine seventy, nine dollars and seventy cents per thousand gallons variable, beginning with the fourth quarter. And John seconded it. Is that what I understood?
That is correct.
That was good. Thank God you're here.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks for your work on this.
Thanks, Dave.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Under C, consider the purchase of park surveillance cameras.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are looking at this again. We had it last meeting. There were some questions pertaining to mostly finance because it is, was an unbudgeted item for two thousand and twenty two. But this has become such a prevalent issue in the parks that we thought it would be best to propose this and, and see exactly what we can sort of catch as far as any sort of crime going on in, in the parks. So Dave was able to revise it and kind of give you a better idea of the cost and where the cost would be coming from as the last memo did not have that. So there's a lot of questions on the financial end. Um, I also did talk to the chief prior to tonight and it was her belief that we were on the right track. The only thing she said was that she'd be happy for a lieutenant to come out door and installation for specifically for the license plate reading cameras to just make sure they're exactly where they need to be, but everything else looked good. So I would coordinate with that with her. And this is again before you, as far as the proposal. And I invite discussion from the board at this time.
Can I just ask why we need four license plate cameras? Because I think that there's just the two park entrances. One for each and going out.
Yeah.
I figured it was something simple like that.
Folks, I, I'm, I'm, uh, I'm a proponent of transparency. And I think it should be mentioned that not only do we have smash and grab style robberies in the park, which is a terrible thing, but we also have vandalism in the restrooms. Mark, can you estimate how many times that's happened, say in a year or two?
I was under the impression it would be twenty four times and then guys would tell me it happens once, twice a week.
Once or twice a week, the restrooms are vandalized. And it causes Mark's public works guys to have to go in there and clean up. And sometimes it's gross. I'm not going to stay any more than that about it. But I think people should know that that's happening and the cameras will help or they better help in finding out who's doing the vandalism in the restrooms. The other thing I want to say publicly is if anybody ever sees vandalism in the restrooms, whether it's the men's rooms or the ladies' rooms, please call the township number, call me, call Mark, whatever, whatever number you have. We want to get on top of this. I, I am a proponent of the broken window theory. That's the theory that says that if an environment goes unattended, people's attitude toward that environment leads to more problems. Is, the corollary is if an environment is well tended, problems and problems are dealt with as they arise. This also affects attitudes and leads to continued good management and maintenance. This is an old theory, but it, it's a good one. In the late nineties, I won't get political here, so I won't say the name. But the mayor of New York decided that the rise in crime was terrible. And he passed an order, I don't know how he got the money, but he did it for every bus and every train car, subway car to be cleaned up. The inside and the outside of all the graffiti, all the bad words and everything else that are written there. And also the subway stations and bus stations themselves were all cleaned up. They were pristine by the time he was done. And crime, both petty crime and major crime in those areas decreased significantly. Uh, I don't want to see our park with these robberies and this vandalism. I don't want to see our park go the way of New York City in the early nineties. The park is too nice, an attribute of East Ocean. And I want to see the park pristine. So any help we can get from the public in checking the restrooms, checking through the park is, is valuable to us and, and I wish you would help us out.
And to piggyback on that, every resident can be a steward in the community they live by not being a tattletale or being a vigilante, but just owning it and, and passing on the information, good or not, so that those that are overseeing it can follow up with it. So I'm right with you, Joe.
I, I view this as, as, you know, our, our priority of health, safety and welfare are residents and, and we have children in the park there. We've got the situation with the bathrooms. We've got the smash and grabs in our parking lot. So I would like to move that we authorize eight thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars for the camera installation project at East Ocean Park. And the monthly Comcast expense.
Second that motion. Thank you. Is there any other further discussion on this matter for the board?
I just want to thank Mark and his guys and everyone else that cleaned up.
I'm, I'm going to actually apologize to Mark and all of his public works department for the work that they have done without complaint that they should not have had to do at all. And so I'm sorry on behalf of whoever is doing that, that you've, that your crew has had to deal with that. So are there any questions regarding this camera purchase here in the room? Do you want to come on up, Bill? And if there's anybody in the Zoom room, go ahead and raise your hand and we'll get you in here in a minute.
Bill Geier, fifteen sixty Tanglewood Drive. Can you hear me okay? So I know Derek, thanks for answering the couple of questions that I had earlier through email about the physical installation and some of the I, IT aspects. So I know in the last session, a couple of weeks ago, the board also talked about, it was a question whether someone was going to be, obviously it's recording, whether someone was going to be reviewing the, the recordings on a regular basis or whether it would only be on when there's a problem.
Yeah, we'll have it in here, Mark. Mark's our resident CIA guy.
Nice. Okay. Thank you. I, I, I think per my emails, I do support the, the spend. I think it makes a lot of sense. It's a shame that we have to do this, but
But, but our parks and our residents are assets to our community.
So I don't know if you also want to mention, just for folks that might be listening and watch the recording about maybe some of the other things that you're looking at to maybe enhance the security, a couple of other items.
Yeah, I, I mentioned to you in an email, Mark and I are going to take a look at signage as far as video, you know, area under surveillance. We think that'll be a deterrent in general. And then what you sort of said about, I'm going to talk to Jason about proactively making, making a little bit more active scene around the areas that may deter people if there are more people around those specific areas in the bathroom. So I will, I will ask him that. Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yep.
It doesn't cost money too as well, so it's
Absolutely.
Interesting question, no, Bill. And I ask you that for the solicitor, if we have active cameras on, on playground with children, do we have to notify? Is there any requirement for notification that, that, you know, children are being
No, this is a public place and it's your property. So you do not need to provide any notifications.
Good. Thank you.
All right.
It might not hurt. It could deter some folks, but you don't have to.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, I'm going to call this question, those in favor of voting for the camera purchase. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The past five zero. Next item up for business is consider the revised language for the noise ordinance update, noise and nuisance ordinance update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to pass this over to Bill in a second, but just as a brief introduction, this has been discussed a, a couple of times. And this is a continued conversation. This is not up for passage tonight. Obviously, this is a big ordinance and we need to be able to get it right and before we pass it. So Bill did take a first crack at a draft. And we can review that. We can have some discussions on it. He lists a few topics here in the memorandum of what we're looking at. Specifically looking at the time and sound level limit changes, waivers from noise regulations, bamboo regulations on the nuisance, nuisance. And I do have two versions of it. One is the clean version and there's another one with, with a few comments on the side. So this is sort of a big task. So it's going to require a lot of discussion back and forth, probably beyond tonight. But I think we thought it was important to continue to get feedback. And I don't know if you want to add anything, Bill.
No, that, that was a great introduction. As Derek mentioned, this is a complete overhaul of what the township has currently in their ordinances for noise and nuisance. As has been explained to you in the past, your regulations were sort of scattered throughout your ordinances. There were somewhere in zoning, you had a standalone noise ordinance. Some of those provisions, in fact, conflicted. Nuisance was in your zoning. So it's better generally to get that out of your zoning ordinance and put it into a standalone ordinance like this. It's easier for people to understand. It's easily, easier for people to read, find the regulations. And frankly, it's easier to enforce as well. So this was an attempt to do that. And as you'll see, the first section of the ordinance create, deletes or eliminates your current noise ordinance and replaces it with a noise and nuisance ordinance with two chapters. Uh, and then the, the remainder of the draft ordinance before you cleans up those provisions in the zoning ordinance that addressed noise and nuisance that would be duplicative, duplicative or in conflict with the new provisions. Um, and as Derek said, there are a couple of things that I think were on the table that the board had some questions or some discussion about. Uh, and, and I And I listed those, we can go through those one by one and then we can open it up to any board members that may have other questions or comments about the draft ordinance. The first is, I'm gonna go on the clean version, the time and sound level limits.
What do you mean by the clean version?
Yeah, it doesn't have side comments. Frankly, you can look at either, they're the exact same thing and the side, the one with side. Exactly, exactly. If you go to the second page, there it has sort of the table. Of receiving land use categories, sound levels and times. This is fairly similar to what you have already. I was looking, I think the the decibel levels are identical. We did change the times, however, based on feedback from the board. To state that between the hours of seven P M and seven A M on weekdays. And then after, outside of the hours of nine to five on Saturdays. We reduced the decibel level for both residential and commercial uses. Is this okay? Is that what you wanted? Just want to be sure, because that was a point of contention.
I'll tell you from my perspective, I thought we might have been looking towards. Eliminating some of these decibel numbers and using a more subjective approach. And I would reference you and I know you know it, Bill, because Vince helped draft it was the East Bradford Township Noise Ordinance. Very basic and from a standpoint of enforceability administration. When you start to throw these decibel numbers in, I know subjectivity can drive people crazy. But on an issue like this, we've encountered so many issues. And it can get so complicated if you do go to an enforcement stage, let alone just the cost of administering and getting meters, et cetera. And frankly, I saw some of the the decibel numbers here and I I thought that they were frankly too low. When I, when I read about a vacuum cleaner that seventy decibels and lawnmowers are eighty to eighty-five. You know, and contractors, look, and I don't know that we can say that you can't, you know, make any noise on Sundays. It seems to be in there as well. I I'm not comfortable with that because that's just not the way that our our culture and our society is working these days. Whether you're working family or you have contractors, they need to keep employed and they they work on Sundays and and things need to get done. I don't think Sunday is in the overall societal picture, forgive me, is as sacrosanct a day as it used to be. Saturday is a sacrosanct day for other religions and cultures, so. I'm a little uncomfortable with some of the numbers and then starting to put these in there. So that's, that's one of my opening comments from my perspective.
Okay, can I address a couple of the first? Numbers can change, obviously, other municipalities do regulate noise on Sundays. So it is something that municipalities do, if you want to or not, that is your decision.
Sure.
Of course, but with regard to the, whether we have set standards or we go with the more subjective. The the nice thing about this ordinance is it allows us to go through both. Types of enforcement, so if you flip to, I apologize.
Exemption page, et cetera, et cetera, which kind of clears or makes moot some of these numbers.
Well.
For those uses.
Even a little bit further, if you go to the fourth page, it's right above the exceptions to noise limits. That sub paragraph two basically says, I know it's lengthy and it uses a lot of. Probably unnecessary words, but it basically says that if anyone makes any noise. That is physically annoying to the comfort of a reasonable person or which is so harsh or prolonged or natural unusual. So as to cause physical discomfort or is injurious to lives, health, peace and comfort, then the township can enforce against them. So it allows you to do both. If the township doesn't want to go through the cost and expense of having a decibel reader out. That's calibrated by an engineer, then you still have this option to say, all right, we're not going to do that, but we can still say. This person obviously is violating this, it's, you know, so loud, it's bothering all the neighbors, they're, all the neighbors are willing to come in and testify at court. It still allows you to go under that subjective option.
And I recognize in creating a subjective environment for this type of an ordinance. That, you know, I don't know how many Solomons are on the board, but how to figure that out when the time comes, because what it means, oh, we have one. His name is John, but it doesn't matter. Are you Baptist? No, never mind. But the, you know, the physicality of being affected, I'm physically affected by it, what does that mean? And I'm one advocating, I'm one that's advocating to go subjective, but I recognize what a conundrum it could end up being, so. And and at that point in time that, you know, we might get one in front of us and the board is just going to throw up their hands and say, look. Sorry, we don't have an answer.
Yep, and I I think I've said, noise ordinances are just hard to enforce.
I I have about three questions and I'm going to start with the easiest one. Why do we have something about bamboo in here?
Let's, let's focus on noise first if we can.
Okay, noise. Do we have a dosimeter? Do we own a dosimeter?
Decimal, yeah.
So if somebody has a problem with noise, can we get out and measure it?
Well, here's the issue.
Will you do that? Who does it?
But we're not, we're not the police, though, we're not a twenty-four seven operation.
Now, that's my, that's another question. The question about section two here on page unnumbered four. Who is going to come out and ascertain whether my neighbor is making too much noise or not?
Yep, so so that's the trouble with the subjective approach in that. The township would have to make a determination based on a resident's complaint. And whatever evidence a resident would have, that the noise was injurious to them. So if you're going to go to court on a subjective noise complaint, then. Me as the township solicitor will require the resident, the, for lack of a better term, the victim. To come in and take, take the stand and testify how the sound impacted them.
Can the victim call the cops?
Sure. But the cops aren't going to cite them criminally, they'll cite them under this.
Okay.
And the documentation then, to make a case would be. In seemingly most cases, particularly off hours, would be by the complainant. And so, because noise comes and goes, so if we don't document it in the immediacy of the complaint. Then it's just. The complainant making the case and having to, having to prove the burden of something that's already passed. That they've been injured.
To make a bad pun here, it's hearsay.
It's hearsay, exactly, so, so, so that's the problem, yes. A police officer going to testify, if they hear the noise, could testify to the unreasonableness in their opinion. But you would also need the the property owner to complain.
And I'm going to tell you right now, and this is not, this is not a comment about we go, so anybody listening out there. Police officers notoriously hate enforcing noise and nuisance.
And they're interested, they're interested in crime and they don't see that as a crime. They see it as a nuisance to them. And that's just the culture of police, that's the way it is. Most police will be frank with you and tell you, we don't want to get involved in that stuff.
Okay, let me, let me switch lanes here. And I don't know, Cody wouldn't, wouldn't have been here. But at some point, we put some teeth or tried to put teeth into the nuisance ordinance. In order to. Deter future pipelines, do you recall that? Do we still have that?
That was started before my tenure and never got anywhere.
It never got anywhere.
That's one of the reasons we're considering the nuisance ordinance as we are. And the other thing is, you know, we cited energy transfer for violation of our sound ordinance. And the way we did that was we hired Panoni, they went out, set up calibrated.
They created a station and they monitored over days when there was an.
Measurement gets tricky, but. It's, it's interesting because the. Fifty on other times plus legal holidays as far as making noise. My neighbor works and so Sunday, he mows his grass. And his gas mowers more than fifty decibels, so. I don't want to be in a position that people calling, you know, on my neighbor and or or. Hiring Panoni to come out and set up tripod of my property order to prove that, you know. So I, you know, a part of this is just a neighbor to neighbor kind of thing that we're trying to adjudicate here and it makes it really difficult.
And and just to be clear, these decibel levels are what you currently have. I didn't arbitrarily pick them.
If I'm not mistaken, I think we've already exceeded these decibel levels this evening.
Probably.
Clarity over the the waivers, Bill, I was looking at, I was looking at. Exceptions to noise limits.
One fifty-six four.
One sixty-six dash four G. Public events authorized by the township, what about private events? Because we do have a waiver process where. You know, people can, if you're having a graduation party for your child and you're gonna, you know, play music, amplified music in the backyard. Put a ten up, technically, I guess. That kind of party should come to the township and request a waiver to the noise ordinance.
Right, so that was going to be my next point of discussion. If you flip to the next page, there is a section one fifty-six dash seven. Titled waivers that details the process to do that. I think I've, I've mentioned to you before. You're putting a lot of faith in your township manager, that that this will not be applied arbitrarily. Or or that he won't abuse his discretion, but in some circumstances, it's, it can be necessary. As long as Derek does it properly.
I I think, I think another issue that has come up internally and talking with codes. Department and I'm not trying to make more work for all of us, but. You know, we're focusing on these waivers specifically on noise, we don't have a special event permit at the township, which can. Bring a lot of things together. David mentioned tents. There's a lot of things to go into the fire code with that tent that we're currently not checking on because we're just so focused on noise. So a lot of, a lot of places do have special events where they cover. You know, fire tents, you know, all different things that go into that and in addition to noise, so it's another thing to think.
Well, it is, and in fact, and Bill, you know it, again, coming back to my old world, we spent about two years on coming up with a special event ordinance in East Bradford, didn't we? Wasn't it close to two years? And talk about another complicated ordinance. I, I did get a kick out of these, these exceptions to the noise limits, noise and trains. And I just, you know, the pull from the movie, you know, trains, planes and. I don't know, we got a train coming, this, this was our exist, I I hear you, I hear you, but.
I'm just wondering, Bill, if if we could make that public. Or private events authorized by the township, we're at a, another number there that would be private events. Upon receiving a waiver.
Absolutely.
Would be an exception.
Or maybe limiting those requests. To a certain number per year. We were going to limit them before and that kind of got pushed by the wayside as well and.
And that's kind of starts to play into what Derek was talking about, a special events. Ordinance, separate ordinance that defines these things, so that all of a sudden you don't have a de facto. You know, wedding reception, bed and breakfast operation that started and they're, you know, they're having, having an event every two or three weeks.
Well.
Your codes department's going to be busy.
The other, the other thing that is, well, see, that's another component. Is the codes department will, will get busy and there, there should be, currently, we're. You are not in our township, but the rest of us who are in the township are paying the bill. For the administrative costs of these noise permits. And we're paying the printing and the postage and the stationary cost for sending out a thousand foot letter. All of the township residents are paying this every time a noise ordinance has been requested. And I'm tired of that.
Just to clarify, I think Michelle's saying there's no fee for the noise permit.
There is no fee, and so currently, all taxpayers are paying for that.
That is true.
And I have a problem with that, you got to pay to play.
Municipal government, I mean, you can fee a lot of things and then people start talking about nuisance fees. So it's, it's a tough one to separate sometimes, Michelle, I get it.
So I I'm tired of of us being on the hook for, for things that actually do cost actual money.
But that's the way kind of municipal government works. I don't have any children that play on the playground and we, we spent eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Not spent that much, but we, we, that's how much total with grants. And I don't have any children to play, I don't have any children to go to public school. But I pay my public school taxes, it's just the way government works.
So do we all.
Pay to be part of the community. You know, people are going to have wedding parties in their backyards, they're gonna, they're going to have kids' graduation, you know. Wine tasting, whatever. I don't, I think that's a part of the benefit of living in a suburban community, it's just part of what we do, so it's.
Can I ask a question on the time? So it sounds like. Not many people were in favor of having dead silent Sundays, if I would. So, I mean, do we want to mimic what we have on Saturdays? Because we have sort of like a nine to five thing on, on the Saturdays, would that be? More palatable for the board or?
Nine to five for activities, I mean, you know, people cutting their lawn, I mean, you know, I don't have a problem, my neighbor. You know, starts their lawn at seven.
Get it, you be done, mine was just mowed on Sunday, so.
So we could, we could, we could put Sunday and and put a time limit on it too.
Yeah, that was my, yeah, that was my suggestion, but.
And the question is, I mean, who, you know, who's going to enforce it and what's going to happen? Well, the ones already cut the noises stop, it's Sunday now, it's eleven o'clock, oh, somebody from the township called. Yeah, well, they can't come out today, well, it's already stopped, so.
I'd be in favor of doing the Monday, Monday through Sunday, seven to seven.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's where I am at the moment. That's more generous, that's, that's more generous than than I, I would, I'd say six o'clock in the morning, but that's, but I, I get it. Maybe I'm a morning person, it's different, but.
If the board. Is amenable to opening this up to public to make. I think that we should allow a few people to come up and comment on this if they have any.
And this is just to say, we're not even nearly ready.
Not an ordinance that's going to happen tonight, so if there are any questions.
And in person, before you do that, let me just explain the process, once you are ready, I know you're not now, but once you are ready, this will require. Thirty days notice to both your planning commission and the county planning commission for them to review this because it implicates the zoning ordinance. And then it will need to be noticed twice in the daily local news. And then you will hold a public hearing before you adopt this ordinance, so once we get a final draft.
I thought this, well, and that's why I commented in the very beginning under the title of the ordinance and I went good. When it was being removed from the zoning ordinance, can't we have this, we're having this standalone, so. It's a legislative ordinance now rather than coming under zoning, why would the planning commission, county planning commission need?
Because you're still amending the zoning ordinance by deleting.
Well, and my comment is, it's still two and a half pages and I don't see bamboo making any noise at all.
Listen, some, some people want to regulate bamboo, some don't, so, so. It sounds like we're, we're at seven to seven, maybe. Sunday through Saturday.
I'm, I'm not amenable to seven days a week, but I, that's something that I, I would like to at least see it limited a little bit on a Sunday, but. I'd like to. I'd like to see what other. I'm curious about that, you have the bamboo question, do you want to go ahead and lay it on?
Yeah, I I included it because it's easier to delete it than it is to come up with something new for your, your review. Some municipalities regulate bamboo because it does not stop once it's grown. Some regulate it completely and outlaw it completely, some regulate it in your property lines, some regulate it near. Rights of way, I know that's a big issue where they fall, I know it's, it was an issue in East Bradford. Where if it wrote, comes right up to the road, it falls across the street because it's falling off the time, so it's up to you. I can delete it in its entirety or I can leave it in, whatever you prefer.
It's considered an invasive species.
It is.
And and when we. And and when we have winters and ice storms, bamboo drops into the roadways. We could talk to Mark about how much she loves bamboo.
Well, Hershey's Mill Road's a good example.
Oh, yeah.
But they cut it back. You can see how far they've cut it back and it can still. Oh, you cut it back?
They cut it back and and that's five feet.
We stuff.
And that's five feet probably that they cut back and it and it and the new ordinance would be forty feet. So that stuff would have to come down on that on that property, so. It's ten feet, but forty feet off of carway, so. But it's it, what happens when people realize that bamboo grows vines underground and then it crops up and it's invasive, it's all get out. And it grows to huge heights and it it's it's not indigenous to our. Our community or 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 central and eastern Pennsylvania.
Speaking, speaking as someone who at one time tried to. Grow it, I couldn't, so. Just gives you.
You're the only person.
Gives you a sensible kind of plans I don't have. So, um, the other thing is this also covers basically boarding.
Boarding junk, junk accumulation, correct, yep. General nuisance type stuff, right?
And so what kind of teeth do we have to really enforce? In that regard.
That's pretty good. That's where it gets a little stronger, I think, and a little more clarity with with junk and although. Those kind of things can be just. Intract, seemingly intractable, going on for months and years. Well, they're cleaning up a little bit. They made some progress this month. Okay, well, let's let's extend the enforcement notice another thirty days and another thirty days. In my life, we played those games for years with some property owners and it was just, oh, no, this is on the agenda again. Yeah. Well, they cleaned up one car, but they're more making progress and that plays into. You know, the whole judicial process. Well, Judge, I I did remove car. I'm trying. I can only do so much. Okay, if again.
So does this give, does does this give our, is this what we have in our current ordinance or is this. Going to give our current ordinance more teeth and more ability to enforce? So what's the difference in this component?
So right now you didn't have a standalone nuisance ordinance. It was only in your zoning ordinance, which requires civil enforcement. So you go to court and you you get a a civil penalty. This changes it to, if you don't abide by the terms of a notice of violation, you'll be criminally cited, a fine of. Between a hundred and a thousand dollars and I can't imagine Judge Smith would do this, but imprisonment of a term not to exceed thirty days. I've never heard of that for nuisance issue.
Is that because a lot of this also crosses over in a property maintenance code as well?
Yes.
So I guess it's differs from the criminal aspect of it.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, are bamboo violators going to be criminally prosecuted?
If they don't abide by a notice of violation, they could be.
Okay. For bamboo. Okay, good. Okay. Are there any questions in the audience? Do you want to come on up?
We lost our Zoom people.
We lost our Zoom people, dear.
I took two of them.
Eric Meyer, Mona Vista Drive. I just had a couple of questions. Under exceptions and noise limit, you mentioned. Yard mains equipments can go seven to nine with no day restriction. Doesn't that cover cutting your lawn on Sunday?
Yeah, it does.
So that.
You're right. Good point.
Effect.
Where is that?
One fifty six dash four. The other question I had. You mentioned snow removal. Township or retained by the township. What if?
Private.
You're doing snow removal for a residence, private residence. You know, it's three o'clock in the morning.
Right.
Are you not exempt also?
We should allow for that.
Because you you don't wait till.
So.
When you're doing snow removal, you don't wait.
No, till seven o'clock.
You wait till it stops snowing and then do it.
And you want to make sure that as few people are on the road as possible. So.
Noise caused by operational snow removal.
So that's. So that's.
Or an individual.
Individual agency.
Retained by the township.
Retained by.
So that's for public rights of way. So this wouldn't permit, this wouldn't apply to those removing snow on private property.
But.
But if you wanted to, we could change it, of course. Yeah.
I think that that's something that we need to consider. I mean.
That's what you're saying, Eric. That's essentially what you're saying.
I mean, we need to make sure that people can get out, go to work. I work in a hospital. I have to go in, I have to go in.
Yeah.
Sometimes that means the snow throws on at midnight.
I don't think there should be any restriction.
Or six.
Certain storms you might plow all night, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was there anything else? Anything else or no?
That's it for now, right?
I was gonna say, don't, don't say no, just for right now.
I can certainly make it.
Bill?
Come on, Bill. All right, where to start?
Repeat my name, Bill Guyer, fifteen sixty ten Wood Drive. So. I I think somebody you recognize me. I was here two years ago, January, February of twenty twenty. Just before the pandemic broke. So Cody, you're new. And Derek and Dave, where this this is new to you as well. So kind of a quick background is my neighbor. And Dave's in my, David's in my neighborhood as well. My neighbor built a band stage. And started hosting regular band concerts with professional bands. This was done. Didn't talk to me first. Had two concerts happen where it was really loud. Um, and I went over to talk to him, said, you know, it's really, this is really loud. This is a big nuisance to us. You know, it it's reasonable. And people understand when somebody has a graduation concert or or, you know, a anniversary party, they understand. You know, it it might be a little bit loud, but to. In a residential neighbor neighborhood, to build a band stage and expect to hold regular amplified. Concerts is is really not reasonable. You know, it escalated, you know. Concerts continued, you know, to the point in February twenty twenty. Actually, in late twenty nineteen, I approached Mark Gordon, the noise ordinance, noise officer at the time. Played a recording to him and he was quite shocked. He was like, that, yeah, it's really. Not reasonable. I would not issue more than one or two permits at the most. So that was kind of the approach. Came forward in February and there was still a lot of pipeline issues with the noise you you referenced and it was decided to kind of sideline the issue. Recognizing that we needed to. Needed to to amend these ordinances. So here we are. It's it's two and a half years later. There have been twelve concerts. I counted them up. Twelve concerts within another seven weekend dates. Put aside as rain dates. Since then, since I was here last. These are quite loud, you know, these are not, these are not your neighbors sitting around. A campfire, roasting marshmallows. With an acoustical guitar singing, you know, kumbaya. It's loud. These are. Drums, fiddles, harmonicas, cymbals. What else? Saxophones? That was new. Um, this, I'm just Sunday. So. And when I spoke to Mark Gordon, one of the things he suggested was, and we got into the decibel discussion. Says that he suggested. The township staff use the decibel X app a lot on some iOS app. And that it's pretty accurate. So. I spent the five dollars myself to purchase that. And I can tell you that, you know, I've recorded a number of these from my property. And just to give you a sense, the band stage is. I don't know, it's maybe forty feet from our, from the property boundary. It's probably a hundred feet to my deck. And to my home office on that side of the house and and the kitchen. Kitchen table. You know, these are. Sunday, I was sitting on my front, front step. Take a break. I was working in the office, kind of listening to the music, you know, my my windows were shut, listened to some of the music. Decided to go walk out and take a break as the band was taking a break and. After they came back, it was also outside and sitting on my steps and made a recording and these were well. You know, well into the peaks were in into the, this was the recording with the saxophone that I made. And. You know, this was well into the, you know, eighty eighty decibels on my front steps, which is. Is probably a hundred feet from the property boundary and another, like I said, another twenty, thirty, forty feet to the band stage, so. You know, thus far, my neighbor was instructed to. Request permits, you know, noise exception permits from the township and that has been kind of the approach. The one advantage to that is it gives neighbors, you know, a notice that there's something happening. The disadvantage is they come really late. So I think the last one that I got in June. June. Get the date. It's Friday. That they Friday, June third. It's for that weekend. I I got the notice, Derek, you would have sent it, your your team. I got it at four thirty in my mailbox on on Friday afternoon saying, guess what? There's gonna be a concert next door on Sunday. And oh, by the way, there's a rain data for some reason. That doesn't work out. There's a rain data the following week. And then, oh, yeah, by the way, there's another concert on that that's approved on on June. This past weekend on Sunday with a rain date of this coming Sunday. So basically, I'm expected to just. Not plan anything, you know, on those days, you know, just in case. You know, I think most people would would feel that this is really unreasonable. And if you think about it, it's kind of creating anarchy, you know, we have, we have residential zoning for a reason. You know, I I know that most people, I certainly I never expected moving into a residential neighborhood. That my neighbor would build a band stage. I mean, most people don't expect that and most people would not expect that they would be. That it would be reasonable to do that. So I think it's important that we resolve this, not only for now, but, you know, it could be, you know, for any of the residents that are listening to this. You may not have an issue now. But your next neighbor. You know, you know, if this is not resolved. Your next neighbor could feel that they want to build a band stage and be a mini Woodstock, you know, right next to your house. So, um. You know, I I think the other point, you know, when we discussed this two years ago is. You know, this is private property. It's not, it's not public property. There's no. It's not a community property. There's, this is not a community event. So, um, you know, how other people feel about it in the neighborhood, people that go to it is really irrelevant, right? In my view. And I guess maybe the last thing, just. As I was reading the the draft ordinance, kind of the one thing that that stood out, you know. And this has to do with the waivers, thinking about the waivers, and I mentioned this before. But the, you know, the purpose right here under, you know, one, five, six, two. Saying that. The top one excessive sound is a hazard. To the, and 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 the issue is maintaining the quality of life of the residents of the township. Interfering with the client enjoyment of residential and public property in the operation of businesses, so. I think, you know, it's important for us to think about it from that perspective as well. So, you know, I. Have to digest, you know, some of the comments, but, you know, when I spoke with Mark Gordon. Previously, and I think the way we left it. January twenty twenty with the board, the board was like. We're gonna look at this, you know, after the pipeline issue. Kind of. Quiets down. We'll look at this. In the meantime. Basically gonna need to. Live with it for the moment. You know, it was always the option for me to use nine one one to call the police. You know, I personally don't want to consume police resources for this, I believe, you know. You know, and I think it was mentioned, you know, they don't obviously speak well to it. My father, my grandfather were both state troopers, Delaware state troopers. So I'm, you know, very. Sensitive to it as well, but. You know, this is, this is really not an acceptable situation. Needs to be a way to, you know, to address this. For all the residents, you know, both now and in the future.
Well, it's well stated, Bill. Let me ask you, have you had a chance to read this proposed?
I did. I, you know, I read it and and I saw that basically. There's no, you know, as it's worded now, there's no, basically it's. You know, basically in in Derek's decision to make a decision whether or not to waive. To to waive. The regulations, the ordinance. Um, it kind of speaks to it being an emergency. I I would, I wouldn't think that a wanting to hold a band concert. In two weeks would constitute as an emergency, right? That would fit under that clause, so. Really, when I read this, it boiled down to what the way I interpret it is that I'm down to. Which the sound does, it exceeds the, you know, the decibel limits. At the, at the property line is that. You know, basically, my only recourse right now is to call nine one one, have the police respond. The way I had understood it with Mark Gordon was that. You know, they would, they would assess the situation and make a decision, you know, whether or not it was unreasonable or not. You know, if I had evidence, obviously, of through the decibel X app of what the actual decibel recording was. You know, it's not quite that subjective in that perspective, but. You know. Yeah, I don't know if my neighbor would would expect to continue to do this. You know, thus far, he's done twelve more concerts, you know, since since we were here last. Plus, you know, another, like I said, another seven weekends, another seven, seven rain dates scheduled. So it's clear to me that he intends to continue this. Doesn't feel that it's unreasonable. So. You know, this might work as it's worded now. But I think if, you know, if we were to do this, a township would probably want to just proactively install, you know, a sound meter. Right on our, on our property line, be easy to do. It's it's the pretty much right there at the gravel path. That gravel path is is an easement for sanitary sewer. I also, which I happen to live right next to the tennis courts and the sewer issue, so. But the gravel path, the driveway that runs down there is my property and the neighbor's property, so that is the boundary line, so. You know, it'd be easy for the township to just right now set up a, a sound meter right there. Do it right on my, my side of the, it's a tree line right there. Easy to do.
All right. Do you have any suggestions for us besides? Having stated your concerns and.
Well, I think it's enforcement. I mean, I think, you know, as I mentioned to, I mean, I mentioned to my, to my neighbor when this first, you know, when I first raised a concern. I mean, again, you know, people understand. Graduation concerts and anniversary special events, one off things, but to do on a regular basis is really unreasonable. Maybe one, you know, a year is 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 acceptable.
Have you noticed if any cars are blocking hydrants or or driveways?
That hasn't happened, but. You know. There's a lot of parking on the streets. Blocking mailboxes. In fact, this past weekend, my neighbor. Was getting a postal delivery on on Sunday and I was, happened to be sitting there. This was when I was out on the steps. And someone had parked, had blocked his mailbox. Right next to being on the other side and postal worker had to get out of his vehicle, you know, couldn't pull up to the, to the mailbox. Did. Did get out of the vehicle. I assume, I don't believe that they actually, if the mailbox is blocked, they don't, they're not really not required to do that, but. Postal worker did do that. So, I mean, that's an issue. I know that in the past it's it's happened. It wasn't an issue just this past weekend, but it's not uncommon for people in the street to park really close. To our driveway where it's really, it sometimes it can be hard just to get in in and out of our driveway. And my neighbor on the other side has some large vehicles and they they seem to always get the, you know. People parking very close their mail, their mailbox blocked right next to their, their driveway on both sides. Our driveways are probably only twelve feet apart, so a lot, so a lot of times people will park on that curb. That space between our two driveways, so you know, it's it's pretty tight. So, you know, I'm I'm sure they're not feeling too too great about it either.
I appreciate your comments. That's. That's a, that's a specific matter, but relative to this.
But I. But I, I mean, I can, there's a lot here. I can, I, you know, I can obviously digest some of this and come up with some, some specific thoughts, but.
You've got Derek's email address, so.
Thanks, Mr. Guyer.
So, so just to round back with the board, um, it sounds as though the waiver section, you would like to look into, there was a conversation about fees for applications for waivers, limiting the number of waivers in, in a calendar year, uh, and your old ordinance did provide requiring notice to neighbors. This one does not. Is that something, are those three things, is there consensus amongst the board that I should work on some language for those things?
Yeah.
I see two heads nodding. I need a third.
What I'm worried about with the, with the, you know, charging for permits and limiting and, and then, um, you know, all the mailings. There are a lot of just spontaneous, I mean, I don't, you know, count up how many graduation parties with fireworks were in my neighborhood. I mean, literally fireworks, right?
Oh, we had a bunch of them in our neighborhood.
Great. I mean, it's, it's, it's a celebration, people gathering and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, I, I don't know if I want to have the township incurring the expense of, you know, sending letters out. I mean, requiring everybody who wants to have a family gathering at their home to, to pay for a waiver and have the township pay for letters to go out to people on thousands.
I, I, I agree with you, David, because that means that, you know, we're, we're limiting them to a certain extent, but when somebody abuses the sys, the system, this is when the problems arise. This is why rules and laws and ordinances and resolutions happen.
Well, here's my, here's my dilemma with this sound ordinance and with the nuisance ordinance in general. And this, this gets a little maybe philosophical or esoteric, but, in our society, it, it seems like when we consider an issue, we consider the person who is the aggrieved party or alleged grieved party seems to have more weight than the other people who are benefiting or enjoying or, um, don't have a problem with the particular ordinance or whatever. And so, I, I, I don't understand that. I have a problem with that.
Well, David, if three guys rob one guy, that doesn't make it right because there's three of them doing it.
That's your, that's a conflated argument. That doesn't really make any sense. What I'm saying is.
Oh, it makes a lot of sense. If, if it's not right to do, and this is, we're not talking about a family gathering.
Well, that, that's.
Talking about a concert.
Well, I see, no, we're not talking about a concert. And, and I don't want to get into point by point with, with that. I'm, I'm addressing this ordinance, and I'm not going to address Mr. Guyer's, uh, issues. Because we have, we, what we have to do is adjudicate this. The unreasonable, unwarrantable or unlawful use of an activity or any public or private property which causes injury, damage, hurt, inconvenience or annoyance or discomfort to any person or resident in a legitimate enjoyment of his reasonable rights of a, as a, on a person's property. So we have this reasonable person document. So who adjudicates the reasonable person? Who's the reasonable person here? Is it the sixty people who are attending the event, or is it the one person who?
The, the, the reasonable person is the judge. It would be a district judge who would make the decision as to whether the noise is reasonable or not.
Right. So, uh, fee, fee of the waivers and limiting the waivers aside, I, I did run a little bit of code enforcement department and see what they had to say about some of this. The one thing they did bring up is the letters themselves with a thousand feet, they thought was a, a little burdensome, and as we continue to do that. So that specific issue, I did get feedback on, but.
Could we do five hundred feet?
Do whatever you want. Sure, it's cut it in half, so, yeah, yeah.
And, and frankly, uh, uh, the, the discussion about fees, the township is allowed to charge a fee that is commensurate with the costs that it expends. You can't, you can't charge a, you know, thousand dollar fee for a noise permit, but as long as, uh, you know, Derek can articulate a reason or, or Dave can articulate, you know, a reason why you set the fee at twenty dollars, thirty dollars, and there's some, some, some backing for that, you can do that. And generally, that's, you know, what fees are for, for the mailings in a particular situation like this.
Just like, just like we're charging fees for sewer.
Or just like you charge fee for an application.
Um, we're not going to solve this tonight, uh, and I don't think it was intended that we would. Does anybody else have a comment?
Well, we've had a good discussion, so this is a good start.
Yeah, I agree that it's a good start, but, um, I think we need some further comments and, and maybe some residents will send email feedback as well.
But we have other agendas. We, I mean, we want to kind of wrap this up by ten o'clock tonight.
Or before, if we can, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I will make the, the edits that I and Derek think the board is looking for, basically, conversations tonight, and then we'll resubmit.
That's great. Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
All right. So moving on, we're going to look at the, the experiment's already been decided. We're looking at the presentation by the futures committee on the spring survey with additional information. So, did I see? I did.
Tom, you've been very.
Tom, thank you.
And I hope you're recovering well because Tom had the, some, uh, orthopedic work done recently, and, uh, it was a big deal. So I'm glad to see you up and about.
Is this, is this mic on?
Is this thing on? Yep.
So anyway, I, I, the hour's getting late, so I'll try and be succinct. Um, you asked for some feedback after the, uh, last presentation that we made on the survey, uh, regarding the, um, uh, analysis on the comments. So I spent about five or six hours trying to capture the gist of those comments and, and I won't go through all of that. I'll let you just go through the, uh, the documentation that we have here and, uh, but you also asked for some potential actions for addressing these, uh, comments. So what I thought I'd focus on tonight is the follow-up actions. Um, so for the central business area amenities, there seemed to be a lot of support for the trees. So one of the things that we suggest as a follow-up action is that the Conservancy Committee uh, recommend, uh, tree type and cost that would be, uh, for this area. Uh, there were about sixteen trees that were originally spaced in that, uh, zone between three fifty-two and Boot Road along, along the business quarter. So, uh, I already talked to, um, uh, Walt, Walter Wosack, uh, and he indicated that they mentioned that they talked about it at their meeting this past week and were supportive of that. They'd be willing, willing to do that. Uh, they do not have the funds, so there would be an additional cost approximately three to four thousand dollars for sixteen trees. So just to give you a feel, okay?
Would that be mature trees? Would those be much more mature trees, or are they still fairly young trees that you're talking?
Reasonable, you know, what, two to three, whatever, whatever they've been buying. So I think he says they're like two fifty. They're like two fifty, uh, trees or something like that. So that would be sixteen trees. That'd be four thousand dollars.
Um, just so you know, we, I, I got an email this evening from Christie who actually has some access to trees for free.
Oh, really? Okay.
So we need to talk to her about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think you can get some trees for free from the, uh, from the tree, uh, the, the, what do you call it? The tree city, the tree city thing, the ar, ar, arbor, yeah. Uh, but I, I think they're pretty small.
Yeah, no, these, these, these trees would probably be small through Christie's.
As a regular trail user, um, the only thing I caution is the invasion of the roots underneath the trail. Cause I ride a lot of trails where that's a, that's an issue. It's not pleasant to, uh.
There are trees that don't do that and trees that do.
Yeah, so I just.
That's why I think the Conservancy Committee is the right committee to, to have, if they have the expertise or they can get the expertise to do, to do that. I don't, I don't have it.
No, and the other component is we have to be mindful of the, um, forest surface because there's the impervious surface and there was the pervious surface, and there's a very complicated system beneath many parts of the trail that we don't want roots getting into. Cause then it becomes a, a problem for that.
Yeah. So, I mean, there might be a couple of places where they had, where they had originally thought there could be trees that were, that are not appropriate. But I, I think there's, if you drive down that, uh, area, I think there's definitely some places that, uh, are appropriate. And, and the Conservancy Committee thought that'd be a good idea too.
Yeah, good.
Everything about trees, by the way, is, I've been doing a lot of reading in, in, um, um, strong towns, um, and trees are traffic quieting. Uh, if you, if you put the, the right number of trees into a right way, it, it actually, people mentally don't go as fast as they normally if there are no trees there. Um, it, it is actually a traffic calming, psychologically traffic calming. So I think it'd be great to have that along the quarter because people do uh, speed along there and people complain about that, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Okay. The other, the other follow-up action we had was, um, that the, uh, is to check, uh, somebody asked, I think, I think you asked John, what would be the cost of the streetlights?
Yep.
And, um, three or four years ago, actually, March of two thousand nineteen, um, John Alchel got an estimate. And I was looking through my records and I couldn't find the estimate, but I was hoping maybe, uh, maybe somebody here.
That estimate's not going to matter because costs have increased so dramatically. We'd have to get a brand new cost.
So, but I thought if we had that record, it'd be just kind of a good, good kind of benchmark.
Can we get an estimate on something like that? And would we have to wire them up, uh, our solar lights even? Feasible.
Some, some communities have, um, when we put up five G poles, um, they can be, they can be electrified and they can actually look like streetlights and they're actually very attractive. So one thing we ought to think about if, is, is can we coordinate that perhaps to, to place those five G poles as street lamps, um, along that quarter and have the utility pay for them?
I like the last part.
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously what we want to do. So anyway.
Should do that.
Uh, so, yeah, who's, I, I guess.
Well, it's always staff. You, you know what I said. It's always staff.
Sorry. Yeah, but I think in this case, if that's appropriate or Dave, you know, you, it's up to you. Okay, so then move, any questions on that, on those two issues?
No, those are good.
Okay. So then we had open space, and again, uh, as, as you go through these comments, there's just a lot of support, uh, throughout this survey for open space. I mean, people, people like the fact that the township has a lot of open space, ha, it doesn't have a lot of the big apartment buildings. It's got apartments, but they're kind of spaced throughout the township. We don't have, we're, they, they like the suburban feeling and they like the open space and they're willing, they seem to be willing to pay for that going forward. So, um, the follow-up that we have on this is basically, I think we need to identify either the Conservancy or our new EAC, uh, combined with staff, need to identify. First, first of all, uh, we don't seem to have a map for the current open space and what defines open space. I had, I've had kind of just. Oh, do we?
Do we, Mark?
Do we, Mark? Do we have a map? Okay, good. All right. Well, we have a map then. Okay, so we have a map of all the. Okay, super. Okay. So we don't have to get, uh, a map of open space. So that was, that was something that we didn't know. So sorry.
I'd like to see a copy, yeah.
Sorry, Mark. I didn't, I didn't get in touch with you on that. Apologize.
He's the man.
Okay. And then, um, so we have an open space, and then so we have where the potential opportunities for open space would be also because they're big properties that, uh, could, that are maybe zoned R one or something like that today that with the Conservancy coming in could be split up, that type of thing. So that's the next one, which is possibly work with the local conservity, Conservancy groups to lay out where those opportunities are, where, uh, and I was kind of negative about these local Conservancy groups when I first kind of heard about it. I thought, well, they're going to come in and you're not, you're going to lose taxable dollars. Well, that's not necessarily the case. You can, you can work, work it so that you can keep the taxable dollars. And actually, a lot of times you'll have a lot less, uh, support. We won't have to maintain the roads in these open spaces and things like that. So, I think we could, uh, work with either the, uh, the National Land Trust or, uh, the Brandywine Conservancy. And so I, again, I, yeah.
Willstown as well.
Willstown.
Willstown Conservancy Trust.
So I think, again, that's probably falls in the area of the, uh, EAC, I would think.
Yeah, they, they, they do cooperate with the Willstown Conserv, uh, Conservation Trust occasionally.
Preservation of open spaces is a big deal and takes a lot of effort.
Right.
And, uh, we've, we've seen it in the municipality I grew up with, um, with a very substantial open space program. There was an open space review board. Uh, we developed an official map that had open space identified on it. We, we engaged with the larger property owners in the township. This township is ninety-five percent mature. There's very few large parcels left. The one next to me up on Hershey's Mill Road is going to be developed. Um, that's, uh, Bill, that's, um, the Miller property now, the farm right, right across from the historic place was that, what, what road is, uh, comes down from Hershey's Mill Estate? Hershey's Mill, well, yeah, but what comes down from Hershey's Mill Estate, Tanglewood comes down in, in the farm right there. That's going to be developed next year. Uh, so we have very few big parcels left and we don't have really the infrastructure to really deal with it. We don't have the money. Uh, because the Conservancy Board, the Conservancy Organization, Natural Lands, the Brandywine Conservancy are, are looking to become take co-ownership of the easements once they occur. But you have to provide a endowment for those for future maintenance, which is a big piece of change. Forget the acquisition of the easements, the appraisals. There's a big structure associated with acquiring open space. Now, if you have a property owner that comes forward, let's just say, maybe their name's Hicks, and they say, well, we're interested in trying to get a conservation easement.
That's not fair.
No, no, well, they're one of the bigger parcels. So I'm going to still say it's, what, if a property or like the Hicks came forward, that would be an easier, uh, discussion because they're coming forward to you. But the township identifying them, going out, creating a, um, uh, if you will, an official map that, that identifies them as, as potential future open spaces. There's a lot to do there, and at this stage in the township, I'm real big on open space, but we're pretty late in the game here.
Yeah. I agree with you. I agree with you. There's not much left, but, um, the residents spoke and they, and as the township develops, they want to maintain open space. Yeah, there's different ways to maintain open space when you do an R one, uh, development too.
Yeah, and I don't want to quash it. It's just there's not much left and there's a lot to do to develop.
Anyway, I think we need, I think we need to keep, keep, keep that in front of us and then it's, it's a bigger, longer term issue, right?
Yeah. And we don't have an open space, uh, tax, if you will. Uh, you know, referendum to establish an open space tax to generate funds. Um, yeah, again, we're late in the game.
Okay.
That's why Tom's called the Futures Committee.
Right, but that Futures Committee can't get in front of what has already occurred in the past that we can't, uh, reclaim.
And apparently.
Twenty-seven percent open space, I think.
That's pretty good given what we've.
We've done a pretty good job of, of, uh, you know, in ten square miles, uh, making sure that we have adequate open space.
It might be just a little bit lower that now that that Miller property is sold. And it's going to be developed.
I don't think, I mean, that, that wasn't, I don't think that was into twenty-seven percent. I mean.
That's one of the things I, that's one of the things that's not clear to me is, is the undeveloped, like the farm down on Ellis Road. Is that considered open space?
No, it's owned by somebody other than us. So twenty-seven percent owned by.
So, but if that's.
Hear the sentiment of the residents, but the reality is tough to connect with that sentiment to do something going forward.
Well, Mike, approximately ten percent, ten percent of the people just didn't like anything.
Well, well, that's not bad.
Survey. So.
Like the survey, but ten percent did just, they didn't like.
Like anything. You know, you say create a task force. I mean, I don't think we need to create a task force. We have a Futures Committee.
Okay. Okay.
You know what?
As far as the connector trails, you mean?
Yes, I would like, I would like. I would like to see what the Futures Committee has to say about, uh, the potential, uh, connectors that apparently were included.
Yeah, well, that's, that's in the, uh, in the master plan, but frankly, they, I think they missed a bunch, to be honest with you. Um, I've got, I've done a lot of research myself, driving around the township and, uh, you know, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of low-cost options out there. So we could, I, I'm, if, if you guys want us to take that on, we'll take that.
Bring us a few of the low-cost options.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and we need to bring forward a few more residents to participate in the Futures Committee to, to help out. I mean, if we're going to charge them some new things. I mean, if we're going to charge them with some new things, we need to get the word out there. Maybe some of our current applicants that may not be appointed. Maybe they're interested. We need to ramp this up again.
We could use some.
Reinvigorate.
I mean, actually, what we could use is somebody that's interested in trails.
Then we can, maybe we can put out. Thank you for, for, this is a lot of work.
It was.
And we, it's really greatly appreciated.
Okay. Good.
I continue to be interested in ser- topical surveys as we go forward in these next, at least next couple of years while we're still here.
Yeah.
Well, nine people like the surveys. Are you one of them?
I don't know that I responded on that.
Twenty-one just didn't like anything. So on that note.
Mikey likes everything.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
It was a lot of, it was a lot of effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tom, thank you.
Yep. Where are we? Where are we? We're considering the support of the pipeline task force memo to Adelphia Pipeline.
I'll make a motion.
Would you please?
What, what they're doing is good. We, I, I trust their research and they have a recommendation. Is there, is there a suggested motion here? Because otherwise, I don't even know what I'm motioning, but I trust.
Mike, I can help you out here. Chris, Mike made a motion for the board to submit a formal request to Adelphia for installation of external leak detectors at their natural gas valve station on Paley Pike.
I would second that motion.
Nicely done. Are there any questions?
A quick comment. Real quick comment is that the technology exists and, and, you know, we get a lot of pipelines just saying, hey, we're doing what's required by law. And, and we all know that that's kind of the minimum standard. What we're asking for here is a reasonable request for a valve station located in a densely populated community next to traffic. And, and at one point, another pipeline company in a public meeting in the East Goshen Township stated, yes, but ninety percent of our accidents occur on our facilities. And, and those facilities are pumping stations and valve stations and compression statements, stations. So that doesn't make anybody feel any better. And the, and the citizens funded risk management study found that valve stations were the most vulnerable to accidents. So this is not an unreasonable request.
David, question. Who's going to write this letter?
Staff.
Okay.
Okay.
Or, you know, maybe the.
I mean, you have all the talking points.
I was, I was going to say, we have pretty much everything body done. Yeah, Jerry, Jerry had the chair of the task force over there. He's done a good job at summarizing.
Okay, so I, I think that we, I, I mean, I'm in full, fully in support of this. I think it's something that needs to be done. I wish we could tie another larger
Entity.
Entity to this, especially since it's been a year since I visited them and nothing's happened. I'm, I'm just saying.
Don't they know who you are?
Apparently I'm nobody, so.
Well, you got frequent flyer miles out of it.
I guess I did. So, so are there any comments regarding this letter?
No, they're doing good work.
With the Zoom room. So all those in favor of supporting the letter to Adelphia?
And thank you, task.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for all your work. We're going to accept the resignation of Vince D'Amico as the deputy emergency management coordinator, EMC. And appoint, the hope is that we're going to appoint Dusty Kilgore or Edward, as he is known by.
Really? Dusty is Edward?
Just make note of that, so.
I have a question that, that Vince is, is resigning as deputy EMC. And Dusty is interested in not the deputy EMC, but the EMC position, is that?
That was a mistake on my part. I apologize.
Yeah, I think that's just.
Switching assistants, yeah.
First of all, we thank, we thank.
My goodness, Vince, for all, for being right there.
Done. Do we need a resolution for this, Derek, or is this just?
No, it's just a motion to appoint.
Okay. I'm in.
So is there a, a motion?
We don't need a.
We don't need a motion?
Oh, sure, we need a motion to.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to appoint, I'd like to make the motion to accept the resignation of Vince D. As deputy campaign man, deputy and emergency management coordinator and appoint Edward Kilgore as new deputy EMC.
The second emotion.
Okay.
I think he said resigning.
Any comments or questions on the boards or in the room? We're getting a little giddy. So I'm going to call this question, those in favor of appointing Edward Dusty Kilgore as our new W EMC.
And thank you, Vince.
Thanks to Vince and review the budget meeting dates. So we have a, a number of budget meetings that are coming up.
They work for me.
They work for me.
They work for me as well.
Okay. No further discussion.
That's John's comment.
Okay.
Hershey's Mill Dam project, how's that going?
Hershey's Mill Dam is going well. As many of the board knows, there, there were some concerned residents over the past week or so. Thinking the galvanized steel that is being used for the boardwalk looked a tad industrial for the area. We did go back to our project manager, kind of Fleming Landscape Architect, got their feedback and told them where some of the residents stand. And to summarize real quickly, they still believe that it is the best design long-term for both vegetation underneath the boardwalk to grow as well as long-term maintenance for being able to stay out of the wetland as, as much as possible for the next however decades the, the park exists. So again, still going well, just some concerns on, on the look of the boardwalk. But I think we, we explained to that residence the, the best we could of, of why we use that material.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm disappointed that some of the residents didn't come in, but that's okay. And can I give the Milltown DM update?
You can.
I wish I had a better thing to state.
Did good. You did good.
The permit is on the desk of the acting dam safety director. And he assures me he's going to let me know when he has signed this permit and sends it to us. So that's more than I've, I think that we can, that's just more than I could even have hoped for is that he preemptively sent me that.
Well, the, the big thing is he responded to you directly, which is interesting.
Michelle's giving credit for it, but we don't have it yet.
That's okay. I'm, I'm just saying where it is. It's on the desk. And Mark Miller's team has put out, I want to say almost a hundred dunks in the Stillwater to deal with the mosquitoes.
John Herzog.
John Herzog is, is the one who gets credit for the sinking of the, the dunks. So are there any other matters?
I, I just want to bring up one very briefly, Cody, very briefly. I just want to remind residents, anybody that's still maybe watching, anyone that's here. Cause I just went through it with one of my neighbors who was caught a bit off guard, maybe because their realtor didn't have it on their checklist and was, was out of sync. But we here in East Goshen Township have a reoccupancy inspection permit for every resale. So single-family detached or attached, there is a resale inspection that's required at the time of tran- before the time of transfer. And that's a key element because it has to be done in advance so it doesn't foul up the settlement. But if people are not aware that they should be, there is a, a form and it covers things like smoke detectors, proper gating and fencing around pools, what are the electrical GFIs, tripping hazards potentially, things like that. So it's, it's an important inspection for the benefit of the seller as well to clean, clean the slate and make sure things are in proper order as well as for the buyer coming in. And it's something that we have done here for a long time, but it created some confusion at the time. And so I, I figured I meant, that's all I have.
Okay. Are there any public comments?
Can that inspection be waived?
I do not believe so.
I don't think so.
No.
Generally, they cannot. It depends on what your ordinance says, but generally not.
No. Not right now.
There are no liaison reports. There is no correspondence or reports of interest. That leaves us with one thing, Cody.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion to adjourn.
Second emotion.
And those in favor, aye. Thank you for your time.
Opposed.